Joining us after closed session via conference call from Conoco Gas Station out in Montana, so he will be joining us then. But now, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Baines, Brettafield, Capriolio, Chavez, Olivier, Brando, and President Soria.
Here. Next is the invocation by Reza Nekumananesh of the Islamic Cultural Center of Fresno. So if we could ask everyone to stand and stay standing for the flag salute afterwards.
In the name of God, the most compassionate and most merciful, we ask you, in all of the beautiful names that we call you and address you with our own traditions and languages, God, Allah, Jehovah, Dios, Lord, Amysama, all that is holy, we ask you to bless this council, our leaders and officials, to be guided in their work and united in their work, so their work is solely for our people. We ask you to cause any divisions and divisiveness and disagreement, act as tool, as path for all the situations that the court brings about the most good for this country. Ask you to deepen their understanding of all that afflicts our people, provide for us opportunities that enrich our livelihood and create... Also fragile, so... Us in the rumble... I say this, like so many times before, the voices of our people are yelling out. I direct these council members... I are all of us to... Hide in our communities... As we move forward to ensuring that not left in the margins or shadows of...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Only have one change, and it's for item 5A. Under the Boards and Commissions assignments, item 13 should read "Legislative California Cities Annual Meeting Set For September 14th, 2018," and the members are Council President Soria and Vice President Brando, and Councilmember Capriolio as alternates. And that's the only change I have.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Or do any councilmembers already have any changes? So we have a motion by Councilmember Baines and a second by Councilmember Brando. Any opposition? See none, motion carries unanimously, 6-0, with Councilmember Capriolio absent at the moment. So the next thing that we have on the agenda, we're going to go ahead and go to closed session, so we're doing things a little bit different, but we will be back to take consent calendar and then the ceremonial presentations upon the conclusion of closed session. So hopefully that shouldn't take too long. City Attorney, did you have...
Yes. In closed session, we have existing litigation Nelson &amp; Noble versus the City of Fresno, and also labor negotiations concerning fire non-management.
Afternoon, we're going to go ahead and resume with the rest of the agenda. City Attorney, do you have anything to report out?
Yes, we're reporting in the Nelson &amp; Noble case versus the city. There is an agreed-upon final settlement. The terms of the settlement are in a document that Francine Kane here in the audience will have available, should anybody like a copy. Also, there is an agreed-upon press statement, she has that also as well, and we will not be making any comment about the case beyond that agreed-upon press statement.
Perfect, thank you. We'll go ahead and resume with the rest of the agenda. We'll start off with our consent calendar. Would any councilmember like to pull an item for discussion? If there's anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of the consent items, your time is now, you can go ahead and come up, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. Okay, perfect. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilmember Brettafield. And I'll second the motion. Any opposition? See none, motion carries 5-0 with Councilmember Baines and Councilmember Capriolio absent. Perfect. So right now, we're going to go ahead and go to the ceremonial presentations. I'm going to start off with a couple presentations that I have for our summer interns, and then hopefully in some short minutes, Councilmember Baines will join us for the very special So this afternoon, I'm going to go ahead and be recognizing three great young people that have been with us this summer. So my office prides itself in providing young people an opportunity to come and do internships here in our office, where they provide valuable services to our constituents and just help us with special projects. And so I'm very proud to be presenting and recognizing two of our summer interns and one of our fellows that have been working with us during the summer. First, I'm going to call up Megan Kelly. And so Megan has been with us this summer. She is an Environmental Defense Fund Climate Corps Fellow. She spent the summer in our office continuing a three-year-long project, which is called Power the Tower, a partnership between my office, Fresno State, the city, and EDF, which is Environmental Defense Fund. Over the last three years, we have accumulated data and identified strategies to help tower district businesses, business owners, and residents to explore affordable, clean, renewable energy technology. The vision really has been to transform the Tower District into a leading business corridor and community powered by smart, connected, clean energy technologies, and serve as a model for economic growth here in Fresno and hopefully beyond Fresno. Megan has also coordinated this summer, it was a Tower District Energy Fair, where we invited not only the businesses in the Tower District, but also residents that live in the neighborhood to explore services offered to them through several organizations. And so I want to thank those organizations that were there, and also companies to provide much-needed information and resources that I know residents and business owners will be able to take advantage of. It was a very successful event, and really Megan was the one that put it on this summer, so we're very grateful for her work. We have been very happy to have had her here this summer, and continuing to lead those efforts really has been impactful in our office and I know in our community, so people will reap these benefits. I want to congratulate her and acknowledge her with a certificate of recognition as she continues on with her professional journey, but we did want to thank you, Megan, for your work. Did you want to share anything?
Okay. So thank you for this recognition, and thanks to all of the Fresno residents for inviting me into your community this summer. I was really excited to learn about lots of great opportunities that are available to small business owners and residents here in Fresno for improving energy efficiency mostly, also some renewable energy as well, a lot of opportunity out there. So hopefully you can visit our website and learn more about what's available to everyone here in the community, and thank you.
Next, I will call up Richard McCoy and Elisa Guzman, if you guys both want to come on up together. So these two young people were part of our summer internship program that the council and the mayor has supported over the last couple years, and so we're very proud of the work that they were able to do this summer. Richard really spent this summer helping us make certificates, we're a very, very critical part of our office proclamations, helping coordinate our National Night Out, which we had to postpone because of the air quality, but he really put in a lot of work to make sure that it was organized. Richard attends University of San Francisco, he's majoring in Political Science and History, he will be, or we expect him to graduate, May of 2021. His aspiration is to go to law school to make a career in business law. His family lives here in Fresno, he's an Edison High School alumni. We want to thank you, Richard, for your service this summer and for wanting to be in our office. And I think your mom also works here for the City of Fresno, so public service runs in the family. Elisa Guzman is another, one of our other summer interns who will be leaving us. She attends Kingsboro High School and will be a senior there this fall. Her goal is going to university to pursue a career that involves both healthcare and law, considering one of the state universities. And I also want to thank you for your commitment and dedication this summer. You guys did an outstanding job, and so here is a little certificate of recognition on behalf of our city for all your great work.
I just want to thank Council President Esmeralda Soria for giving me the opportunity to learn more about the City of Fresno. You know, you see this really alien-looking building, and now I got to learn about all the hard work and detailed oriented people that make up not only the council members, but their dedicated staff. And I really want to thank Esmeralda's chief of staff, Terry Cox, and also Itzi Robles, her council assistant, for helping me learn more about public service.
Thank you. Do you want to say something? No, you're good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Oliver Baines, if you want to join me? We have a very special presentation, I do want to thank the Hunt family for being here. It is a special day in the City of Fresno, and I'm actually very proud that as Council President that I'm able to do this, along with my colleague Oliver Baines, that I know was also contacted me and saying, "We have to do something." And so we're just very proud to be able to be recognizing Barbara Hunt here this afternoon. And we all know who Barbara Hunt was, and she was no stranger to City Hall. I know that she forged many friendships over the years here in the City of Fresno. Just a little bit about her, before I share a little video and then I pass it on to my colleague, if you didn't know, she held us accountable here in the City of Fresno. I think we could agree, right, colleagues? And so she held accountable four of our mayors and numerous council members over the last 40 years when she attended the city council meetings. She regularly sat in this chair and reminded us about the work that we were doing and who we were to make sure that we represented. She wasn't shy at all. She said what she thought and meant every word she said. She endeared herself to many council members over the years. She repeatedly spoke up for her southwest Fresno community, to the District III council members in particular over the years. She referred at the podium to Councilmember Ronquillo as Councilmember Ronquilio, asking Councilmember Cynthia Sterling if she was listening, and reminding Councilmember Baines that she was watching out for southwest Fresno before he was born. That's what she would say. She didn't save her comments just, she didn't say her comments just for District III. She would put down her fist on the podium and would ask even Councilmember Quintero to wake up, "I see your eyes are closed." That's what she would say. And remark to Councilmember Olivier, "Pay attention," because she had something to say. Although her unique personality shined through her expressive wardrobe, which is why we used some bright colors this afternoon, she was no stranger to hard work. I don't know if many of you guys know, but she was actually employed for some time as a sheet metal worker. We know that that's no easy job. Her love, though, for her community triumphed over all else. She continuously stood up for injustice and advocated for change. That's what Barbara Hunt stood up for, or stood for. I know that I will miss her as a council president. I hadn't had the pleasure to have her so many, come as often this year, because I know that she was ill, but I did get to watch over the last four years come and visit us and advocate and continue to be a champion in our community. So I know that she will be missed, I will miss her, missing her. And today, I think it's very appropriate that we honor her, because for the last four years, she didn't give up. She didn't give up on us, and she did not give up in the City of Fresno, in a city that she believed had so much potential and that we needed to stand up for those that didn't have a voice. That's who she was. And so with that, I want to pass it over to Councilmember Baines, and we have a short video that really encapsulates who she was.
Thank you, Council President, and you know, I'll be brief. Council President, you forgot that she routinely told us also that we were being investigated by the FBI, and we were going to all be arrested because we were embezzling money here. With every dollar that we spent was illegal. You know, so many fond memories of Barbara, really so colorful. I remember, she ran against me twice, and I remember, but it was all out of love, believe me. It was never an adversarial-type relationship. She told me, the second time, I think she ran against me, we were on a debate or something. I said, "Barbara, why you keep running against me?" "Baby, because I love you, but I got to keep you right." And that's what she told me, "You got to keep me right." That's why she got to run against me. So she was just such a person that always spoke her truth. She spoke her truth every time, and it was never out of a mean spirit. You know, she actually would sit here, and she would read our agenda, she had something relevant to say on every single item. It was really quite something. And as I exit my time, everything, as I'm winding down, everything's so nostalgic to me, I think about Barbara, and we've never, ever had a citizen like that, who actually knew a little bit about everything we do in this building, day in and day out, you know? So we're going to miss her. I am so happy, we're going to drape this seat for her, we're going to keep this here in her memory, in her honor, because that's where she sat, she meant a lot to all of us. I will say that although Councilmember Quintero isn't here, she loved Sal Quintero. Like, let me tell you, she might have called him out for nodding off one day, but she always loved Sal. See, we knew things would be okay if Sal was here, you know? She loved Councilmember Quintero, and I know that he probably wished that he were here, but anyhow, we're honored to do this today. Barbara was a wonderful free spirit, and we all know that she's in a better place, and we will miss our time with her. So with that, happy to play a short video.
When people ask you, "Why do you do it? Why do you come here week after week after week?" What would you tell folks in Fresno brings you back to City Hall?
I love Fresno. I was born here. I've been here all my life. My mother, Zellman, and Christopher Hunt, we're farmers out there. When I saw my city in trouble, I come to help. I want to help the City of Fresno. I swatched downtown, we had a lot of beautiful stores here, all the stores started disappearing, all the problems we started having in City Hall. The City Hall went broke in 1986, we prioritized a lot of these departments up in here. And then I kept seeing all these bond debts and all the monies going out. And then on west side of Fresno, I seen they got the signs up there, "East." I know I was born in west southwest Fresno, and they told me that west Fresno store that Thorn going west, there's no people out there. So I had to be a part. I have my Associate Design degree and do the service, I am a Drug and Alcohol Counselor, I love people regardless of what sex, race, religion, I consider myself as a servant of God. I was put here to help our folks. Now, these people in City Hall, they need me. They need all of us. Everyone should get involved with this process. This involves every child, every person, everyone here in the City of Fresno. Come and get involved with the process, come and see why we have these problems. The same thing I've been talking about for all these years, it's coming true. Look at the banks, we got a lot of bond books up here with Fannie Mae and Fatty Mac, and we got a lot of bonds with Lehman, we got a lot of bonds with all these here, bonds that we need help in. We need to come to City of Fresno, everyone, to see what's going on, then you make your decision. I'm a public servant, I love coming here, I love my hats, I put on my colors to the way that I feel, and maybe they might not match the clothes, but they match my heart. I have a good heart, and I just love people. Now, Chief, Mayor, everybody, they always, the people out in the streets, they tell me, "Barbara, keep up the good work, don't stop." And the people encouraging me.
Well, there you have it.
Not to stop, and that's why I'm here.
There you have it, my dears, spoken like...
And that's who Barbara Hunt was. She was beautiful inside and out, and really wanted the City of Fresno to thrive. And so it is, you know, in this moment that we want to invite the family, Beverly, the daughter, to come on up. We do have a special proclamation that we wanted to present to you. We're going to have the clerk read the proclamation for the record, and then after that, we'll do the unveiling of the chair, where what I will say is that today, we recognize her with a little plaque on that favorite chair that she had here, and we hope that with the words we have engraved on that seat, that her memory and her legacy will remain in our chambers, and that her symbolic presence continued to hold all of us accountable. She stood for everyone having a say, and that's what Barbara Hunt represents to our community. And I challenge all of us that are here and folks that are watching to get involved, because that's what Barbara wanted. She wanted all of us to have a voice. Clerk?
Where is Barbara Ann Hunt, 1947 through 2018? Was a west Fresno activist who sometime was employed as a sheet metal worker and served on the west Fresno School Board. And whereas for over 40 years, she dedicated her time to attend Fresno City Council's meetings, where she became recognized for her political activism. And whereas Barbara Ann Hunt advocated for bringing jobs and development to the poverty-stricken neighborhoods in the City of Fresno, and whereas Barbara Ann Hunt is an example of what makes Fresno a great city by exemplifying leadership and altruistic values that embody the Fresno community. And whereas the City of Fresno City Council will in memory of Ms. Hunt, install a plaque on the chair that Barbara chose each council meeting to be seated in, which will now be a historical piece at City Hall commemorating her life and legacy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno Mayor and City Council does hereby recognize August 9th, 2018 as Barbara Ann Hunt Day in the City of Fresno.
It says, "The City of Fresno dedicates this chair to Barbara Ann Hunt, an advocate who promoted open and accessible government for the people of Fresno, August 9th, 2018." And let me tell you the significance about this, there is no other one in this council chamber, this is the only one. This is the only one, yeah. It's the only one, the only plaque we have here.
Thank you, and I wanted to thank the family for making the trip to City Hall to be here and commemorating again Barbara Ann Hunt this evening, or this afternoon.
So with the permission of the Council President, I know there may be a person or two here that knows Barbara, knew Barbara, and may want to come down and just make a couple of public comments. You know, if anyone's here that may want to say something, just an experience or something, now would be the time to do it. So you come to the lectern.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, there you go.
Okay, I'm George Finley. I've been in Fresno since 1952, and I've known Ms. Hunt family ever since I've been here in 1952. I can't relive her life, but I can tell you one thing, she was for west Fresno and people in Fresno, period. She did not just say west Fresno. She was for everyone in Fresno, because it means that we as a citizen of Fresno have to look at all sides of Fresno, east, west, north, south, and make it a place, and that's what she was doing when I met Ms. Hunt, and especially when she would come to the council meeting, I would be here with her. I can't relive it, but I tell you, she meant what she said and said what she meant. And I want to thank the President's Chief of Staff, Ms. Terry Cox, that helped us when we needed help, and Barbara knew where to go get it. And Terry said she couldn't be here today, but to let people know that she was behind Barbara, and anything that she needed, she got for her. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lula Tucker. I'm the daughter of James Tucker, James Edward Tucker. Barbara was a, is a part of our legacy, she's a part of our history. She was a beautiful black queen, whose story says it all. I'm honored to be here to honor her today. She was a person who, a beautiful person who, not only did she stand, but she stood even if she had to stand alone. even if she had to stand alone. She fought for what she felt was right. She fought for our justice. She fought for the west side. She fought to make sure that she kept you all on your toes. And I hope that no matter what happens, she's still in your ear whispering to you, no matter what. I, I'm here, I'm, this is a joyous day for me. I'm glad to even to be a part of history in the making. And she's just dear to my heart. She was more than, uh, she was, she was, she meant a lot to me. I'm gonna miss her. And I love her. And I thank you guys for honoring her in such a beautiful way. Thank you.
Thank you.
As Fresno County Superintendent of Schools, I had the opportunity for Barbara to be in many of my meetings as well. And one day after one of the meetings, I took her out to lunch on West Fresno at her favorite restaurant. And as we walked in, the, she said to the owner, "You can't kick me out, I'm with him." So she had a great sense of humor and loved being around her. And she pointed out things you hadn't thought of and made you a better representative with everything that she did. She was a wonderful person.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say I have a number of fond memories of Ms. Barbara Hunt. I think of one time at the Hinton Center, it was a community meeting with, I think at the time, Mayor Allen Autry. And not only did she keep the elected officials on their toes, she also kept us as just community members on our toes. She asked us, you know, where were we at, when things were happening at City Hall? And she held us also equally accountable and say, Noah, I don't want you just getting mad at the mayor here. You need to make sure you come to City Hall. And that's one thing I always remember about Ms. Hunt, that she loved our city, but she also held us accountable. But she held us accountable because she wanted to, to see our community move forward. And I believe her spirit lives on in the people of West Fresno and the city of Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Keena McFadden, and I'm a community advocate and also dear friend of the Hunts to, to the family. They, they know that how much I love them and how much I, I love Barbara Hunt for being a trailblazer for the African-American businesswomen and entrepreneurs. She always very, was very encouraging. She was supportive. She attended a lot of the block parties that she had heard about. And she was very, very wise in, in anything that had to do with West Fresno or anything that had to do with resources. As, as I was growing up as a, as a child, I would always see her around canvassing or promoting or marketing something that had to do with, with making a difference and, and just giving resources to those in need. She was there to feed those that were hungry. She was there to counsel those that were in need. And she was supportive to those that needed things pushed on, on the table. It's just my honor to definitely be here and to be there for the family in her absence. She is definitely a leg, her legacy will live on. And to, to City Council, I thank you for honoring her. I, I, I do love the city of Fresno as well as Sister Barbara Hunt did and does still. And I know that she has a lot of people in her family that will make sure that her legacy lives on through just the works that they do in the community. Her daughter, Lady Bev, has always been there in the community with Toys for Tots. And, and just, just all of you, I just thank you for, for this opportunity and thank you for her recognition.
Thank you.
Council President. Also, I, on, on behalf of, of the staff, it wasn't just council members that Barbara held to account. It was also city managers as well. And I know that I speak for former city manager Bruce Rudd, who wanted to express his sincere condolences to the family and to, to let everyone know that he considered Barbara to be a, a very unique and a very special individual who made a profound impression on everybody that she met and that she will be missed in City Hall. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. So I have an interesting story. My first day as Chief of Staff to Councilmember Quintero back then, I remember Barbara was sitting there and he sent me out. It was my, my first assignment to give her this beautiful picture of her with her, the white hat that she had. And I remember I sat right there next to her and she was so happy to get that picture of her and Sal with the hat. And she was so giddy. She gives me this big old kiss and she says, "You give that to Sal for me." It's my first day, right? And I said, "I didn't see this in the job description." Got back there and told Sal. But I remember asking her for, for a hat joking around and she says, "Oh no, you can't have this hat. This hat's been around the world." And, and so to the family, I got a special request. If you somehow could get us a hat, I would find a very prominent place to put that, just to remind us of, of the beauty that, that Barbara Hunt had. Thank you and my, my deepest condolences to, to all of you.
Yes, I too want to express my condolences to the family. I'm back on the council after having been gone for a while, but I was on the council some 16 years ago and Barbara was there. And Barbara was at that time pushing hard for the Kearney Palms Shopping Center. And she was a fighter, to say the least, as we all know today. She certainly pushed me a lot of times and had great admiration and respect for. But I want to share with you one thing. One, one time I was going through some difficult times as we do here publicly and it's, sometimes it's broadcast in the media and in the Bee. And she, she went like this to me one time when I was on the desk and I went over there and she said, "I'm praying for you." And that meant a lot to me because she was tough, but she was very feeling for people. She cared a great deal. And she cared about the people up here, even though she, she pushed us hard and challenged us all the time. And I never forgot that. And that was very sweet of her and I wanted you to know that.
Councilmember Olivier?
Thank you, Council President. Just to the family, please accept again my greatest condolences for your loss and thank you very much for sharing her with us.
Thank you. So thank you so much to the Hunt family again for being here. And just know that just like your, your mother, your grandmother, your aunt, your neighbor, your friend, that she loves the city of Fresno, we love her as well. Thank you. Oh, is there someone else? Okay.
Hello, I'm Shaquilla Miss Willis. Been on Ash Shaquilla Hunt. That was my grandma. I'm her oldest granddaughter. She used to kidnap me all the time. I was like, "Where we going?" "Mexico, let's go." Anywhere, San Francisco, Oakland, whatever she feel like it, we out. We have our blue jeans, our black shirt, our black boots and our leather jacket. And she'd be like, "Kila Kie," that's what she called me. And I put my hand right in her back pocket and we hit the road. And I used to cry back and forth from New York to Fresno to go visit my grandma Hunt because my mother stayed in New York at the time. And she was just leaving my grandma's, I used to cry hysterical. So she hugged me and she taught me this song and she said, "Every time you think about me, I will always be here." And she said, "Stay strong and put your mind to it. Whatever you want to do, believe in yourself. Don't give up." And I had a question about Spanish. She, she and him got all upset because I didn't know Spanish. I was like, "Grandpa, she's, she taught me on the spot. Uno, dos, tres, the basics, the food, what you want, you know? It's an honor. It was. And I am very happy and grateful because it is still a pleasure because my mom, I, it's a, it's, it's a legend. And we, we stand strong and firm and we never give up on ourselves. We almost got seven daughters and I'm the oldest and we still conquering. Thank you, Grandpa. I love you. I miss you. And thank y'all very much for honoring. Y'all already know, y'all said, and y'all said it all, so I don't have nothing to say. Thank y'all so much from the Hunt family.
Thank you.
Uh, I just want to say something real quick. Grandpa, I've known her for 19 years. And even from the first moment I met her, everybody in this room can attest that you can say she's a teacher. She will teach you something. If you sit down and talk to her just for a little bit, she'll, she'll have you walk away with something to think about. Sometimes I even had to go look some stuff up. I'd be like, "Wow." And then even when we moved away for a little while and there's some things she was telling me when I first met her, then I was out there, was out there in Las Vegas and I was seeing it firsthand and I was like, "Wow, that lady, she can, she got foresight." You know, and that's the one thing that we always do in a situation like this is we take the blessing of the memory and the interactions we had and we take them with us. That's why, that, that way, her legacy will never die because we always have something with her, you know? So I just wanted to say it's an honor to be able to sit here and represent Grandpa with the family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, to the Hunt family, thank you so much for, for being here. Next, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda and it is the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of July 26, 2018?
No changes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion made by Councilmember Chavez, second by Councilmember Bretafeld. Am I okay to do just a, okay, so is there any opposition? And I will be abstaining because I wasn't on the call the entire time. So I'll just abstain on, on the vote. So motion carries five zero with myself abstaining and Councilmember Caprileo still not on the phone, correct? Next, we have Councilmember Reports and Comments. Councilmember Bretafeld.
Yes, I would first like to thank Art Alvarez and his crew for their immediate response to some constituent concerns that we had. And secondly, Aaron Aguirre and his crew for, they plant, placed some dog waste bins out on the trail, along the Sugar Pine Trail, did it really quick and it looks so much better out there. And that's going to be obviously helpful for the folks who have, have pets. So thanks so much to your staff.
Great. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President. So I want to thank our city manager for the big Fancy Creek cleanup that we had. Our, our waste division did an amazing job. We picked up quite a bit of trash and debris out there and I just wanted to say thank you to, to the team. Everybody was really great out there. We had one minor mishap where a truck, I think, broke a toolbox, but I think they got it, they got it back working. So thank you for that.
Perfect, thank you. Looks like no one else has punched up. We'll go ahead and move on to our scheduled items. We had a two 10, I don't see Mary Esther Correa here. Okay, so we'll go ahead and, and go on to the next. We had a two 15, continued hearing to consider adoption of resolution related to the designation of a property to the local register of historic resources.
Council President, I should have pulled this at the beginning of the meeting, but I wasn't quite ready for it, so it kind of slipped by. But I've had a request from PG&E, if we could postpone this. The person in their department that needs to make a comment on this item has been caught up in the wildfires. It's also part of his job to protect PG&E buildings around the state of California. So he's been really busy in the fire zones. So he's not been able to make a comment on this item. So I'd like to make a motion to continue.
Continue. Perfect. So there's a motion by Councilmember Brenda to continue a second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? See none. The motion carries five zero with Councilmember Olivier and Councilmember Caprileo absent. Okay, so next we have our three o'clock item. So this is the action pertaining to Fresno Clean and Safe Neighborhood Parks Tax Ordinance Initiative Measure. And do we have a presentation on this?
I'll be presenting. I'm just gonna give an overview of what we've done. So regarding the parks initiative, on July 18th, 2018, the Fresno Clean and Safe Neighborhoods Park Initiative was presented to the city clerk's office. After a prima facie review by the city clerk, the init- initiative petition was deemed filed on that same day. And then it was forwarded to the county register of voters for signature verification. We needed at least 10% of the registered voters to have valid signatures. And after the count by the county clerk, they did a 3% sample and determined that 27,623 valid signatures will constitute a valid signature, a percentage of 117.9. And so the city clerk issued a certificate of sufficiency, which is, okay.
Hello?
Councilmember Caprileo? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So we've started the three o'clock scheduled item and the clerk is doing a short report on that.
Okay, very good. Good morning to everyone and I'll be listening.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so the county clerk came up with a signature percentage of 117.9%. The city clerk issued a certificate of sufficiency for the petition as required under Elections Code Section 9115. Election Code 9215 requires that upon certification of initiative petition, the council must do one of the following. Number one, adopt the ordinance without alteration at a regular meeting at which the certific- certification of the petition is presented. Number two, submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters of the city at the next regular municipal election. Or number three, order an informational report at the regular meeting at which the certification is presented. The report must be presented to council within 30 days of certification of the petition and the council must either adopt the ordinance or submit it to voters within 10 days of being presented with the report. So those are the options and the actions that council can take.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I know that there are a number of folks here to talk about this item. So what we'll do, I already have some yellow cards. And so we just want to make sure that we make this as smooth as possible. So if you can, if you're interested in speaking, please fill out the card. Every person will have two minutes to come and speak. I will call all the cards that I have and then at the end of these cards, if you still wish to speak, you will be able to come up. When you come up, what I will ask is that you first say your name and your address for the record. And then once that gets going, you will have two minutes. Okay? So we're, we're gonna go ahead and get started. The first, the first couple cards that I have is Amy Kitchener, Michael Trent Sealy,
Good afternoon. I'm Amy Kitchener and I live at 511 East Terrace in Fresno District 1. I'm the founding executive director of the Alliance for California Traditional Arts, a statewide nonprofit supporting the folk and traditional arts headquartered in downtown Fresno District 3. And I'm the mother of twin nine-year-old boys. I urge the council to give Fresno voters the choice of approving the Fresno for Parks Sales Tax. Our Fresno for Parks Coalition represents a deep and broad-based coalition of community leadership that my organization, Alliance for California Traditional Arts, is proudly invested in. In my 25 years of living and working in Fresno, I've worked on many In my twenty-five years of living and working in Fresno, I've worked on many civic projects toward the betterment of our community and I believe Fresno for Parks represents a huge opportunity to move forward a comprehensive approach to improving the quality of life for all Fresnoans with a goal of addressing the very real disparities that face our residents and our access to safe and healthy places for our children to play and participate in the arts. Living in District One, we routinely drive several miles to the lovely Oso de Oro Park, one of the only really safe, nice parks in the city. We need more spaces like this and ones that are located in walking distance from our homes. We also need local public funding for the arts. We know the benefits of arts for our children in improving brain function and development and economic development in terms of attracting and retaining a competitive workforce among other essential functions. I pay for private music, visual arts, and dance instruction for our boys who are also academically advanced. We see how cultivating creativity in our children makes them better, more successful students. All Fresno families should have access to relevant public arts and cultural experiences as part of the fabric of our city. As the thirty-fourth largest city in the United States, we desperately need to build and sustain our cultural and artistic opportunities. We rank so far below with some of the lowest amounts of green space and arts funding in the country. Thank you. I urge you to let the Fresno voters decide by placing the ballot on the November initiative. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Michael Sealy. I live at 2495 East Soquel Circle in District Six. Growing up, a lot of my formidable experiences in Fresno have been shaped by the parks I have been so fortunate to live by. Woodward Park, Selma Lane Neighborhood Park, Todd Beamer Park, Kaiser Permanente Park. They've been instrumental in creating a positive image of Fresno for me. Additionally, I'm a musician and a lot of the success that I enjoy today, I directly attribute to my growing up with arts in elementary, middle, and high school. I urge you to support this initiative on the November ballot for the immediate decision of the Fresno people because the success that I've enjoyed, the formidable experiences that I've enjoyed in my district, in my community, are not the same experiences that other people in Fresno have. There are places in Fresno where they don't have adequate parks, they don't have adequate community resources, and what this initiative does is it allows for everybody to have equal access to parks. I urge you to vote in favor of putting this on the November ballot for the immediate decision of the Fresno people. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Savala and I have long been involved in promotion of parks for our community, our region, being one of the people who originally began advocating for the San Joaquin River Parkway, sat on the San Joaquin River Conservancy, promoted and we've established a neighborhood park in our neighborhood as a matter of fact. I was a point person for the League of Women Voters in this signature campaign and I want to speak as a person who was on the streets, in front of the grocery stores, at the parks, at the farmer's market. There was such an overwhelming positive response to our solicitation for signatures. I don't believe I had, I know I did not have one person who objected to being asked. As a matter of fact, probably the only obstacles to getting signatures was the fact that people who were shopping in the city didn't live in the city, they lived on a county island or even in Madera. Second obstacle was they'd already signed our petition or they themselves had a petition in hand that they were circulating. I would urge you to agree to put this on the ballot in November as a response to the overwhelming joyous support of your Fresno city community for a parks funding measure to implement your master plan for parks in the city. Thank you.
The next three speakers that I have is Alan Perot, Mark Kepler, and Lee Ayers.
Hello, my name's Alan Perot. I live at 2747 West Lake Venice Circle in District Two. I'm a retired orthopedic surgeon, founder of the Fresno Surgical Hospital, current chair of the Central Valley Community Foundation, and our board voted unanimously to support this measure. I can tell you that we do not compete well for, our community does not compete well for professionals of a whole variety. Healthcare professionals, our hospitals recruit nurses on five continents, we have way too few mental health professionals, and we have way too few college graduates. And everybody in this room pays a price because of our inability to attract talent to our community. And what I can tell you as a physician, what happens is you get a line on a prospect to come join you, the spouse then looks at statistics and says things, sees things like, oh, in 2015, Fresno was dead last among the top one hundred cities in the United States in the quality of their park services. Does this sign me and my time's up?
You have one minute.
Oh, good. And so I think we need to change the way we invest in our community so that we are better competitors for the talent that we need to make our community grow. And the Parks Initiative certainly isn't the entire answer, it's just a piece of the puzzle, but it's a very important piece and we need to convince our community to support it and change, begin to change the perspective that people have of whether we're on the move and investment worthy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Kepler. I live at 538 West Bedford in Clovis, but I work at 5241 North Maple in Fresno. So I'm going to speak with my Fresno hat today. I'm sure you're aware of the numbers. Recently, the Washington Post noted that Fresno had one of the top ten climates in the United States. But we also know the numbers that Fresno ranks near the bottom. Most recent statistic was ninety-fourth out of a hundred largest US cities when it comes to park space. So the question is, can you connect those two dots? I think those two dots are connected by our failure to utilize our natural resources. I want to follow up on something that Alan Perot said, and I'm speaking today as a professor of management from the School of Business. We need to attract talent to our community, maintain and grow our businesses. You have to, the only way you can do that is if you have amenities that attract those businesses to our community. You know, we really need, beyond quality of life, we need something that is going to really improve our opportunities for economic development. So I would suggest, and obviously I've been an advocate for trails in the community, I think there's an opportunity with over two hundred miles of canal banks to turn our community into something that's really unique with two hundred miles of linear parks and trails throughout our community. That would be a signature amenity that virtually no other city in the United States has. That would lead directly to economic development for our community. So the bottom line is let the voters decide.
Good afternoon. Lee Ayers with Tree Fresno. We're 3150 East Barstow in Paul's District and we've been in existence since 1985 and have planted over forty-four thousand trees. This past year, we planted over a thousand trees in city parks, city of Fresno parks, and so we have a firsthand understanding of the challenges of the maintenance of the parks, as you well know through the Parks Master Plan, and the need to expand them. We've lost hundreds of trees because we haven't been able to keep up with the irrigation and care in the parks alone. So for all the reasons you've heard, we encourage you to support the measure. Our board unanimously supports it.
The next three speakers will be Elliot Balch, Vincent Correll, and Reverend Simon Bissell.
Good afternoon, Council President and members. Elliot Balch, the COO at the Central Valley Community Foundation. Our address is 5260 North Palm, number 122. For us, the story of today begins in 1877 when Louis Gundelfinger arrived in Fresno from Germany. He started helping out at his cousin's business, Einstein and Company. Louis Einstein is the ancestor of today's Eaton family. Louis Gundelfinger became co-owner of that business and a local business leader. He was one of the first chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. He helped launch the Bank of Central California. And as a business leader, he also believed in the community's strength is rooted in its quality of life. So he was also a director of the Fresno Art Association and a member of the commission that oversaw Roding Park. Louis Gundelfinger died in 1939 and his daughter-in-law Lulu, who is an amazing woman in her own right, died in 1985. And her will created an endowment fund at the Central Valley Community Foundation to honor Louis's philanthropy. And today, the Louis Gundelfinger Fund at CVCF supports musical organizations and parks in Fresno every year. It's the passion of Louis, the vision of Lulu that brings us here today, able to support transformation in our local parks and arts, and it's a testament to the integral role that we see of good quality of life and the growth of our economy. We collected over thirty-five thousand signatures from Fresnoans, anxious to see that change as well. And as we went, we validated signatures internally as best we could. We found that signatures came in roughly as follows. In descending order, the most, eighteen percent of signatures, or over forty-four hundred validated signatures, came from District Six, tied with eighteen percent also from District Two, fifteen and a half percent from District One, fourteen percent from District Three, and eleven or twelve percent each from District Seven, Five, and Twelve, Seven, Five, Four. In other words, from all across the city. We know our community has many needs and we see the parks measure not as distinct from a comprehensive approach to those needs, but as part of a comprehensive approach. And it's in that vein that we urge the council to put the measure on the November ballot today.
Good afternoon. My name is Vince Correll. I live at 840 East Cole Avenue in Fresno and it's right across the street from one of the parks that we do have and I enjoy it. I'm here to underline the things that Dr. Perot mentioned to you and that Mr. Kepler mentioned to you. That is that when people that run large organizations that we have been trying to charm for the last thirty-five years that I've been here, when we want to charm these folks, they get their top level of management together and they look for the amenities that they can use with their middle management to get them to move here with the business so they don't have to hire all over. And parks are part of those amenities, so I hope you give us a chance to vote on it.
Good afternoon. Reverend Simon Biasel, 216 East Simpson, 93704, District One. I'm a Presbyterian pastor and I have two kids. I have a seven-year-old daughter and a four-year-old son and they are in church every Sunday. And to be honest, the thing that I am glad that I get to offer them the most by being in church every Sunday is not doctrine or theology, don't tell anyone, but it's the opportunity to run through the halls after church. Because I believe that when kids run through the halls of a church, they have this feeling like they belong. And there's something about running as a kid, you're always told to stop running. Most places, you're told this is not the place to run. And when a kid can run, they feel like they belong. There's two places that I see my kids, or maybe three places I see my kids being able to do this. One is Gazebo Gardens. They, thank you to Gazebo Gardens for opening up their space, a public, or a private space and making it feel quite public. Our zoo, that is a wonderful space, thanks to sales tax. And then the park, Los Osos. And it's fun to watch my kids run out of the car into the park because they believe that they belong in this park. Unfortunately, it's not their neighborhood park, it's somebody else's neighborhood park. And one thing I would love to be able to offer my kids is their own neighborhood park that they can run through and believe that it is their park, so that they believe that they belong here in the city and that this city belongs to them. So I ask that you would give us voters the opportunity to vote to make that happen.
Next three speakers, if you guys can line up. Lilia Chavez, Larry Powell, and Mas Masamoto.
Good afternoon. Lilia Chavez, 556 East Yale, District One, President Soria, members of the council. I am also the executive director of the Fresno Arts Council and I'm here today in that capacity, but also as a parent. And as I consider the early years of being a young family, I remember my oldest daughter, we had a small home with not much of a backyard and we wanted to have a birthday party. So the closest place for us to go was Roding Park and we had a wonderful birthday party for my daughter there in the park. What's interesting about this is that young children's early experiences stay with them forever. And my daughter, every time we would drive by Roding Park, she would say, Mama, that's Happy Birthday Park! And she remembered how special that place was and what a good experience she had had. Children, all children, need to have those experiences. As the director of the Arts Council, of course, I look at this initiative in a very different way. I see how important it is to support arts funding. And to support arts funding because arts is an economic driver for our city. We are able to hire artists who put money back into the community. We are able to leverage other funding. Last year, the California Arts Council gave away fifteen million dollars. We weren't able to access much of that for Fresno because we had no match. This will provide us with the kind of resources that we need to be able to bring new dollars to our community. Most importantly is many of our arts resources over the years, for all kinds of different reasons, have been lost. This is an opportunity to renew those programs, to bring them back to the community. Some decisions in the past perhaps have not been the best for a better Fresno. Today, you have the opportunity to make a decision for the future that will provide for greater Fresno. I urge you to put this initiative to a vote in November. Thank you.
Members of the council, Larry Powell, former Fresno County Superintendent of Schools, 2995 West Wellington Lane, and your district, Mr. Brando. As a member of the board too of Central Valley Community Foundation, we voted to support this. Also, I'm a proponent of the Parks Initiative, one of the three listed on the ballot. With over thirty-five thousand signatures, the measure has met the signature gathering threshold to be put before the voters of the city of Fresno. I and many others in our city believe this is a transformational opportunity for our community. Of the largest one hundred cities in America, Fresno ranks ninety-fourth in parks. We can do better and this measure will help make that happen. Poor areas in town have less park space than others. We can do better and make that happen. We also have a number of situations going on. Anyone who has ever driven through Fresno on Highway 99, the landscaping makes it look like Fresno is less attractive than we actually are. We can do better and this measure will make that happen. We have wonderful arts programs, but not enough of them. We can do better and this measure will make that happen. We need to build new parks and maintain and upgrade the ones that we have. We can do better and this measure will make that happen. We have a potential river, trailway that can compete with San Antonio's Riverwalk. We can do better and this measure will make that happen. We also know the needs of our public safety officials. Many of us in the coalition stand ready to help support an effort to make that happen as well. I have great faith and trust in the voters of Fresno and we stand ready to make our case to them and also ready to live with the decision that they make at the ballot box. That's the amazing thing about democracy. Sometimes it is taken directly to the people for their assessment of an issue. This is one of those occasions. I look forward to the election and the decision that is made. Thank you for your time and for putting this qualified measure on the ballot. Thank you for your time and for putting this qualified measure on the ballot.
Mas Masamoto, I live in Delray. I'm not a resident of Fresno, but I think this shows the power that this measure could have outside of Fresno, including the whole valley, and especially part of the dedicated funding that will be for the arts. One of the early actions will be to create a cultural arts master plan, a transparent guide that will show how arts can grow and bloom here. I'm talking about arts for all, not just about the aesthetics or the quality of life, but the direct impact arts can have on our daily lives. Arts can create an identity, a sense of place, by celebrating the histories and culture of our rich valley, honoring all the stories from all parts of Fresno. Art can be the fabric that unites and helps us explore the rich diversity of this place we call home. Some may claim arts funding as unnecessary, but I've seen firsthand the power of the arts. For example, we can bring into Fresno a program called Healing Arts, which helps military veterans cope with PTSD. There's a role of arts in education in new ways, such as a program that was combined dance and math in a recent workshop here in Fresno. Arts funding will help coordinate and orchestrate festivals, not only showcase local artists, but bring in outstanding other artists, and recognize the revenue stream and the economic engine of arts that's all too often ignored. And finally, arts can foster a new creative economy as the worlds of business and innovation partner together. These are all parts of how art works for all of us and as an investment for the shared future as we launch into a new creative era for Fresno, because Fresno knows and understands the transformative power of parks and arts. Thank you.
The next three speakers will be Judy Paraki, Juan Arambula, and Jose Leon Barrasa.
Good afternoon, members of the council and Fresnoans. My name is Judy Paraki. The address is 5151 North Palm, Suite 900, Fresno 9370, 93704. I am sure that we are all grateful to be in your chamber today and speaking with our esteemed leaders. I am sure that we are also mindful of the enormous responsibility that you all must feel in your leadership positions. And, as you can see, the citizenship behind me take quite seriously their own responsibilities as our democracy tells us to do by coming to this important room to discuss what's in hearts and minds as well as hopes and dreams. As a former pediatric nurse practitioner, and even before that, a Fresno county as well as Fresno Unified District School Nurse, I saw firsthand the results of many of our youngsters not engaging with outdoor play on a regular basis. Now, you all know that when youngsters no longer engage, then rest assured, their grown-up selves will be left wanting. Obesity, mental health issues, drug addiction, diabetes are chronic and prevalent in American culture, and unfortunately, ever more so in our own community. What I've seen is this, not all children can exercise by joining athletic teams, and not all parents can support their children in such efforts. They need readily available areas to go do these kinds of things. Most of the, and on another note, most of the cultural arts programs I've enjoyed as a youngster are long gone from our public schools, so communities such as Fresno must take up the slack. As a long supporter of Fresno endeavors, I cannot say enough for the need of sustainability. The arts foster creativity and discipline. They show us who we are and where we have been, and often point to where we're going. So, that's why this comprehensive ballot measure brought before you in the chamber today is so exciting. Our family is multi-generational. We engage, we are outdoor people, we see the value in a vibrant cultural community, we think that arts promotes creativity and community strength, and we think safe parks and trails, along with cleaner corridors and youth programs, are essential building blocks for a healthier and more enjoyable place to live.
Judy, can you wrap up?
Done.
Because your time is up. You want to just wrap up?
I'm just going to say, there are many things beyond our control, but thankfully, coming to speak before the chamber and for the opportunity to let the electorate speak is not one of them.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam President, council members. My name is Juan Arambula. I reside at 623 East Cambridge Avenue in your district, Madam President. And I'm here as a member of the Board of Directors for the Central Valley Community Foundation. As has been pointed out, we voted unanimously to support pushing for this measure and to gather the signatures. We are here today with a request, but before getting to the request, I'm also here as one of the 35,000 signatories to the petition. But perhaps most importantly, I'm here as a father and a grandfather. My grandson is here. I'm proud to say, three of our four children have returned back to Fresno with their families. My oldest grandson is here, he's 11. My youngest granddaughter turns three today. And what I would like for them is the same as I would like for all children in Fresno, and that is to have a healthy environment where they can play, where they can exercise, and where they can grow up to be the kind of individuals that we want. So, my request today is for you to please consider allowing this measure that is supported by 35,000 Fresnoans to be placed on the November ballot. Let the people decide. There is a great deal of wisdom in the people. Let the people choose. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the council, Jose Leon Barrasa, CEO of the Southeast Fresno Community Economic Development Association and the Southeast Fresno Regional Park and Soccer Complex Authority. As you may remember, we created an authority because it was, we needed to have a legal entity to be able to participate in the adoption of that park. I want to thank each one of you for supporting the adoption of that park. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. We have thousands of people that are helping us clean up the place, and we are planning to develop that site as a regional park and a soccer complex. There are a lot of, there's a lot of help from the community, but that's not enough. We need your help. As we travel through the valley, we go to other communities like Bakersfield, Visalia, Merced, Kingsburg, a lot of different places that have very nice amenities, parks. But Fresno, as you heard, ranks at the bottom of National Park Service, surveys. And, and, and we think that we can do better. We have to make parks a higher priority for our city. We have to make parks a, something that we can bring to our community because it has a tremendous impact on the quality of life and the health of our community. We want people to live longer, and you know mortality rates are not very good in areas where we have a lot of poverty, like South Fresno. So, I urge you to support the placement of this item, and thanks to the, all the organizations that have done such a great job in, in obtaining the signatures from the community. And the community should have the opportunity to decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I'm going to call up the next three people, but I, so, I just want to share with you guys, I think that the council is eager to vote. And so, in the interest of time, I know I still have a bunch of cards, so if you don't mind and you still want to come up, but have something different to say in support of, of the item, I'd encourage you to still come up, but if you don't, I know that the council is eager to vote. So, I will call the next three people. Sherella Nicholson, Joan Eaton, and Paul Gibson.
Good afternoon, Council President Soria and council members and staff. I'm Sherella Nicholson, District 3, Resident 2267 South Lotus Avenue, Fresno. I work for Fresno Unified School District, Board of Education, and serve in ministry at St. Rest Baptist Church. I am so excited for the Parks, Fresno for Parks Initiative, because it's the action behind the Fresno Parks Master Plan you all approved, so thank you. This is exciting for the city of Fresno, it's exciting for the St. Rest neighborhood, and all of the residents, children, seniors, vets, and dreamers that we serve. St. Rest is a staple in the community, and I am speaking on their behalf. We've been around the last 70 years in serving the community in so many different capacities. Most recently, as a congregation, because of the lack of green space in parks, we've decided to fundraise to create our own park, to, and to open it up for the community, along with a youth training facility. So, this is great, but it's not enough. And so, I just, we need to do better. We need more green space to combat childhood obesity, we need green space for healthy options for seniors, and for residents to get together, along with many other things that folks here today shared. So, thank you for your time, and I encourage you to place the initiative on November's ballot.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. My name is Joan Eaton. I live at 1660 West Alluvial in Fresno. I am the daughter of a pediatrician. She is here with me, my mother, Virginia Stammer Eaton, retired at this, at this point. I am also the mother of a pediatrician, who couldn't be here today. She's working at UCSF at Children's Benioff Hospital. My mother and I gathered signatures together to help put this measure on the ballot, and my daughter helped us as well. All three of us have, were born and raised in Fresno, and both my mother and my daughter care deeply about children, of course, as do I, and together, they have asked me to read this letter to you. The letter is dated today, and it's addressed to the Fresno City Council. Dear City Council members, this letter is to express our support, actually, I'm going to start by telling you that this is from the American Academy of Pediatrics. Dear City Council members, this letter is to express our support for the city of Fresno plan to increase funding to expand and renovate city parks so that all children in Fresno will have access to open green spaces that are safe and can host opportunities for outdoor activities. There is evidence to suggest that increasing exposure to natural environments can improve children's health. More activity outdoors is associated with lower stress, lower body weight, improved motor abilities, and improved relationships with adult caregivers. We urge the Fresno City Council to consider placing the Parks Funding Measure on the November ballot. We believe that raising the sales tax to secure funding to invest in safe and usable park space is an investment in the future of our children. And it's signed sincerely, Dr. Jolie Limone, Board Director of the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Thank you so much.
My name is Paul Gibson. I live at 1660 West Alluvial in District 2, ably represented by your colleague, Mr. Brandow. My wife, Joan, who just spoke, and I own guaranteed real estate for 22 years. I believe Dr. Perot has already spoken quite capably to the kinds of challenges that we face as we brought people in from various companies who are considering Fresno as a place to live. But, in the spirit of Madam President's request to bring you something new, I am also the governor's appointee on the San Joaquin River Conservancy. And I trust that you all know that this ballot initiative, if successful, will open the much-wanted, long-awaited River West property that terminates either at Woodward Park, actually connects Woodward Park with Palm and Knees. I'm also a member of the Fresno County Boys and Girls Clubs. This measure directly affects the clubs at Eldorado, Inspiration, Fink White, and East Fresno. All those are city buildings where our organization spends thousands of dollars maintaining the upkeep that the city cannot do. Relieved of those expenses, we could hire more staff, and I truly believe we could keep young people from having to ride in the back of Chief Dyer's squad cars. And with that, I trust you'll support the measure today, and I really hope to hear all of you vocally support it all the way to November.
Next, we have David Jimenez, and Ephraim Botelo, and Hillary Ross.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is David Jimenez. I'm in District 1 alongside of Ashley and Hughes area. So, the parks closest to me would be Lyons Park and Quigley Park. Though Lyons Park does have a skate park, which is very nice, and you know, people utilize that, I would like to see some improvements in, you know, these parks, and not just these parks, just, you know, all the parks in the city, just as I've seen Inspiration Park and how, how many people gravitate towards that, though it's new and, you know, it has a lot of these, you know, things that people could utilize. And, you know, that's something I would want to see, not just within that park, but, you know, within the rest of the parks. I do have a nephew, so I'm an uncle. So, you know, I want, I would want to be able to, you know, be able to take my nephew, or for my nephew to be able to walk with himself to these parks without having to go a distance to, like, places like Inspiration Park or Woodward Park. So, as you can see, you know, not just me, but other Fresnoans really want this measure pushed, so if you guys can, please put it in the ballot. Thank you very much.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Ephraim Botelo. I'm 4182 East Washington, District 7. So, I'm part of a group called the Fresno Boys and Men in Color. We've met with some of the council members before. So, we're a group of young leaders in the community who advocate for our community's health. And throughout the past years, I've been involved for about four years, and the past years, we've been advocating for parks for a very long time because we realized that parks are detrimental for, for young people and families across Fresno. So, we believe that this, this time right now is really important, and we need to put this on the ballot, because young people in Fresno have been advocating for it for a very long time, and community members all around Fresno have been advocating on parks for a really long time. Speaking on my own experience, so I live closest to Holmes Playground, and I spent a lot of my time at Holmes Playground, playing indoor soccer and soccer, as well as other parks around South Fresno. And parks is something that has helped me, keep, keep me busy. Whenever I had, didn't have anything to do, I would go to these parks, walk to these parks with my friends, and just stay busy, right? We're like, we're being, we're being active in the parks, and it kept me out of a lot of trouble. So, we got to make sure that we start investing in our parks, specifically in South Fresno. We have a lot of good parks, we would love more parks, but we need to start investing more in these parks, because as we know, a lot of these parks in South Fresno are either only in fair conditions or in poor conditions, right? So, we got to make sure that all these parks are in good conditions for all community members to feel safe at these parks. It's not fair for me and my family not to feel safe at our community park, and for us having to travel all the way us having to travel all the way to South Fresno, all the way to Woodward Park, just to feel safe at a park. That's why we feel that, that this, this, putting this on the ballot is really important to make sure that all residents feel safe in their park, and they have a, a safe place to play at and be healthy. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hillary Ross. I live in a county island that's supported by city services, but more importantly, I work at 155 North Fresno Street, which is the UCSF Fresno Medical Education Program. Speaking to the recruitment issues of enticing people to Fresno with its image issues, the parks ranking hurts. We're constantly trying to get residents and recruit physicians to the area. So, that's huge, but also bigger and more important, we have to fix the crime in parks issue, because it's our emergency medicine physicians, our family physicians, our residents, our pediatricians that see the children, that, with the gang activity there, they see the victims, the young ones, that are abused, and those we know, if anybody reads the paper and looks at the news, we have sexual exploitation of our youth in a big way. And people go to parks to recruit, they find these young people. We have to improve. Thank you.
Next three people are Vivian Foss, Gabriel Lozano, and, I can't tell, and Sarah Parks.
Good afternoon, President Soria and council members. My name is Vivian Velasco Paz. I serve as a Board President of Arte Americas, a cultural arts center in downtown Fresno, and I'm on the Board of Directors at the Central Valley Community Foundation. I'm also an attorney, a mother of two little girls, one is down here with me, and they attend preschool here in Fresno, and my husband and I own and operate a medical practice in Fresno that employs nearly 30 people in Fresno. While we do not live in Fresno, we, we are, our family spends a significant time, the majority of our time, in Fresno. My husband and I grew up in rural communities in Fresno County. Our communities were poor, and our schools and parents did not have a lot of resources, but we had great mentors and teachers who exposed us to extracurricular activities that changed our lives. They encouraged us to think big, to give back to, and to give back to our community by helping other young people achieve their true potential. The extracurricular activities we participated in as youth paved the ways for the tremendous educational opportunities we had. My husband Carlos attended Yale and Harvard Medical School, and I attended Brown and UC Berkeley School of Law. We have had opportunities to live in cities all over the, all over the country for our law and medical training, and we could have set up our business anywhere, but what drew us back to, to the Fresno region was knowing what a difference it made in our lives to have adults, teachers, and community leaders who invested in us when we were kids. That's why we came back, and that's why we strongly support the Parks and Arts Initiative. This initiative is not just about green spaces and about art on the walls. It's about people and our community investing in themselves, especially our young people. We believe the initiative will give our youth access to positive extracurricular activities that will change their lives and improve our community. We consider the measure a good long-term investment for Fresno. The positive environment that more parks and programs will foster will create youth who are inspired to achieve their goals and eventually more productive adults. You might not see immediate returns, but in 10, 15 years, 20 years, you'll have more doctors, lawyers, engineers, teachers, business owners, coming back to Fresno, and that translates to more jobs, more tax revenue, more people committed to investing in our community.
Can you go ahead and, and wrap up?
Okay, yes. I'm very excited about what our community is doing. This was a huge community effort. There's a lot of optimism and enthusiasm for positive change in Fresno that it's palpable. We are very proud to be back here and to, to be a part of this. We hope that you will give the voters an opportunity to vote for this, to, to invest in themselves, and I'm so proud that my daughters are here to see this process. So, you know, with your support, we hope we can get this on, on, on the ballot for the voters. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gabriel Lozano. I work at 3362 East Falls Avenue. I'm part of District 5, Luis's district. We entered an agreement with the city of Fresno to adopt the park and build a 49.5-acre park. Basically, essentially, it started with just me and Mr. Brazza reading an article, and as a single father and a United States, United States Navy veteran, I found it kind of alarming that we didn't have the many of, have, of a park. And growing up in southeast Fresno, having to jump the Roosevelt Pool and going to Woodward Park for a park was unacceptable to me, and one thing that I am is very stubborn. I don't like being told no, so I told Mr. Brazza, "We can do this." And when we forged that agreement with the city of Fresno, it was, it was a great thing. One of the things that, that is identified by Callan Bible Screen is that Fresno 3.0, is that Fresno is at the 98% to 100% percentile of, of, of waste. So, we can improve that. To sequester carbon, you need trees. To have trees and get them in the right amount, you have to have a park. You can get a lot of them. Our park is going to sequester 525 metric tons, which is one of the biggest projects in the state of California. And we're doing the fundraising and so forth. And the other thing that comes across a bit, programming. We can incorporate the homeless to not be punitive, but be, have sensitivity within the neighbors, the staff, the homeless task force, that we can incorporate them to be part of the solution, not the problem. We have stations to charge cars up to reduce the emission controls. That, we have a training, a vocational type of training for green-type jobs, that we have a program for the city to use these youth to put them to work. And the other thing is, is if you build parks...
Can you, can you wrap it up, please?
Okay. If you build parks, you reduce crime. I come from, you know, a lot of things, southeast Fresno, and if you keep these kids busy, they have no time to get in trouble. So, thank you for everything. You guys have a good day.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Sarah Parks. I live at 6804 North Backer in Council Member Bretta Feld's district. He's not here. And I've lived in Fresno my entire life, and I was thinking about what I might say today, and I just kept thinking about my experiences from childhood in Fresno parks. We live near Cary Park, and I can remember cheering my younger brother on at baseball games, T-ball games with my family, and walking home through Cary Park from Tioga Middle School on weekday afternoons. I remember our end-of-year picnics at Woodward Park and spinning on the tire swing until you got dizzy and sliding down the giant metal slide that burned your legs on the way down. And I remember summer evening picnics at Woodward Park during the outdoor concert series that happened once a week with my mom and my dad. And I lost my dad to cancer about 20 years ago, and I cherish my memories with him and our family at parks. And through my work with the River Parkway Trust, I've served, worked with thousands of kids from every neighborhood in Fresno, and it's so sad to me, the disconnect that they have from parks in our community. And we can change that today with this initiative, and so I encourage you to put it on the ballot and to support it as we campaign to November, because it's going to make Fresno a better place to live, especially for our kids. Thank you so much.
The next three people I have are Ms. Preisey, I couldn't read the first name, sorry, Eric Payne, and Jolene Tellis.
Hello, council. Thank you for having us in your chambers today. You can tell from the audience that this is really, really important to us. My name is Michelle Ellis Preisey, and although I reside in a county island in central Fresno, I live at the Fresno Art Museum, which is at 2233 North First Street, District 3. Hi, Clint. And I'm the Executive Director and Chief Curator at the Fresno Art Museum. I'll keep it short, because you've been listening to a lot of people, but I think we're unique in that we're almost a poster child for the Parks and Arts Initiative, in that the city of Fresno owns our building, the city of Fresno maintains Radio Park, and we are in each other's laps. And we hope that the museum is a symbol of a safe place, a beautiful place, a quiet place. We see almost every school child in the Fresno Unified School District during the school year, 6,000 third graders. We are the art component in their lives, no matter where they live in this city. And it would be very important if we saw funding for both Radio Park and for the museum, for Arte Americas, for the Fresno Arts Council, for the Philharmonic, for the other arts institutions that really are a mainstay of culture in this city and which the city council should be very proud of. The seed money provided by this initiative will allow us to be the best we can be for Fresno's children and citizens, and the many visitors to our city that come to see Yosemite and spend time with us here. In the words of Alice Waters, "If art doesn't make a difference, what on earth is it for?" And we want to be here for another 69 years minimum. That's where we've been for 69 years in Radio Park. So, I thank you for your time, and I encourage you to place Fresno for Parks and Arts on the November ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Payne. So, looks like we're, everyone in the room is here in support. I did call those folks, but if you still wish, I don't want to take people's voice. So, if you want to, you still have your time, but I know that this council is eager to vote. So, Jolene, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jolene Tellis, and my residence is 4341 North Van Ness. I just wanted to say, I folded up my sheet and put it away, because most of what I would have said would be redundant, but I've raised four sons in this community, and all four left the community for many years to pursue educational and professional goals. All four have returned to Fresno, and I think they have returned to Fresno because they believe it's a community in which you can make a difference. And today, I think, is an example of how citizens can step up and attempt to make a difference. We know, and I think you, being elected members of City Council, work hard, and you know that your resources are limited, and that without citizen support to dig deep in their pocket to help you some, solve some of your problems, these problems will not get addressed. So, I'm very hopeful that you will not, that you will seize the day and put this on the ballot for November. Otherwise, we will lose two more years of valuable time to invest in our community, to make it, transform our community and make it a better place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Hugo Morales, Sandra Celadon, and Tom Bohigian.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon, council folks. I just am here to represent not just Rady Bilingua, but also myself as a parent. I can tell you, in terms of Rady Bilingua, we support the arts, and we support building a healthy community, and that's why we're here in Fresno. I serve in the community through public broadcasting in multi-language, Spanish, English, Mixteco, and Riki. But at the same time, as a parent, I can tell you that there's very little opportunity for parks for parents and for children, and we have, you know, a nine-year-old twin boys. And throughout, particularly the first six years, I went to only one park that I, as a parent, considered safe, and that is also park. And that is unfortunate, and I think here's an opportunity to build parks throughout our community and where children are, which is the southern part of Fresno. So, I hope they will support this by voting to put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Celadon. I'm here with Fresno Building Healthy Communities, and I want to take this opportunity to first thank you in advance for your vote this afternoon, and really just say thank you also to young people. And I think for Fresno Building Healthy Communities, we've been talking about parks for a really long time, and I think what gets lost in the conversation is how that conversation started for us at Fresno BHC. And that was really when we were talking to young people, 13- and 14-year-olds, about the general plan. And at that time, some of the young people that were present said to us, "Why aren't you guys talking about parks?" And at that moment, we said, "Well, what do you mean about parks?" And young people really opened up to us and said, "You know, the parks in this city are really under-invested. They're not maintained. I don't have a park near me." All of the things that I think we all know, we've, we've heard over the years. And so, at that time, we made a commitment to those young people that we would absolutely look at parks in our city, and that we would engage in a conversation across the city with other folks from all walks of life to talk about parks and identify solution to improving our parks. And so, today, we stand before you, not just as Fresno Building Healthy Communities, but in coalition with all of the folks that are in the room today and many that couldn't be here with you, who helped gather all of the signatures that have been submitted and are now before you. And I think this is the one time, or at least in recent memory, that I feel extremely proud to be a Fresnoan, when you see so many different folks from all walks of life, from every corner of our community, standing together for a common cause that will transform this city for generations to come. And I think what's really important today is demonstrating that we absolutely can achieve amazing things together. And so, we know that the Fresno for Parks Initiative is not the solution to all of the challenges in our city, but we do believe it's another stair on our way up to make sure that this community is one where every individual can thrive. And so, we stand here before you to thank you and to also offer our partnership to solve all of the issues that our city is faced with. So, we look forward to continue to working with you to solve other challenges in our community, and again, thank you.
Madam Council President, members of the council, my name is Tom Bohigian. I live at 4817 North Harrison Avenue in Fresno, California, 93704. I am really, I am so happy today, because what you see in front of you and behind me is the culmination of an incredible community process that has come together and hammered out a measure that probably not one of us would say, "That's the measure I would write," but this is the measure that we will fight for and that we will campaign for in this election, if your council will do what we hope you will do, which is to place this measure on the ballot for that election. 26 years ago, I was sitting, I don't know whether it was in Louise or Gary's place, but I proposed a citywide Parks Assessment District, which would have allowed, under state law then, we would have built out the entire state, city master plan. We would have had maintenance now for these parks, like Dicky Playground, go and take a look at it, or opening the restrooms down on Jensen River Ranch, down on the San Joaquin River Parkway below Woodward Park. We would have renovated Roding Park. This has been going on for decades, folks, and that's why there is so much excitement in this community, because we're going to do something that is... in this community, because we're going to do something that is going to change this town, and it's going to not only be an economic driver, and it will be, and it will do great things for the arts, as has been said, but it's going to do something really amazing for our children and for our self-image. So when we drive up and down the streets, like First Avenue or Cedar Avenue, from South Fresno to North Fresno, or those median islands that for decades have been allowed to go downhill, they will be landscaped and maintained properly. And we may even be able to clean up the garbage on our freeways that probably about 2 million people drive through on their way to Yosemite, Kings Canyon, and Sequoia National Parks. That sends a message about our town, and as much as I love this place, because I've lived here all 59 years of my life, it's one of these things where it's time for change, and we're going to do it with your help. Thank you very much.
Daniel O'Connell, Thomas Wheeler, and Marco Sanchez.
Council, Daniel O'Connell. I live at 3260 East Kirkoff. I'm the Executive Director of the Central Valley Partnership. I live just a stone's throw from here, near Holmes Park. And when I drive home, I see those lights on, and I see children and families playing out there. I even saw young junior American football players yesterday. It's also next to Huntington Boulevard, which Councilmember Chavez, I still don't see you walking there enough, but Elizabeth does. The, I wanted to talk a bit about the process that happened here and what an initiative is. The Equity and Justice Coalitions, the Conservation and Environmental Groups, the Arts and Culture Community, and the leadership, in particular, of the Central Valley Community Foundation, its board, staff, were something to behold during an era when we have such divisive But as I thought of many individuals that showed a lot of leadership in this, during this time, I also then think of the 35,000 people who put their name on a ballot. So I think that this initiative represents the city and its people wanting to invest in themselves, and I would ask you, what does it also say about where you should be looking in the future for future policies? So keep driving down that road. This is a representation of the city's general plan coming into fruition and its Parks Master Plan. I encourage you to support the initiative and let democracy move forward. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Wyler. I am the Director of Faith in Fresno. We're located at 4147 East Dakota and a proud member of the Building Healthy Communities Collaborative. And I'm just here inspired by the efforts of the many folks who worked together, the many partners who pulled the signatures, and the volunteers who are in the room behind us and many who aren't here today, who got, who did the work to get this on the ballot, and really inspired as well by the opportunity in front of the council today to make this transformative effort a reality. We know parks is a public health issue. Parks is about long lives and prosperity, and we at Faith in Fresno also believe that parks is a moral issue. Access to parks is how we can love our neighbor. So I stand here today with partners to echo the encouragement that you have already heard and to thank you all, and we look forward to making this pass in November with your support. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Marco Sanchez. I'm a member of Fresno Boys and Men of Color, and I'm here today to elevate youth voice and specifically the voice of one youth in particular who couldn't be here today. So I'm going to be reading what he would have said if he were here today. So, "Hello, my name is Charlie Lee, and I am 16-years-old. I am the youngest in my family of six, and I have three other siblings. I am a Hmong youth leader with Fresno Boys and Men of Color who came today to support this measure. Coming from a very poor family, we didn't have much to do for fun, as my parents couldn't afford to buy us games or electronics. I remember walking to the parks with my whole family. The children would run and play on the play structure while the adults would set up a picnic for lunch. The best part was that it was free for my family, and it didn't cost my parents anything to see their children happy. Parks are important because it provides all families, including low-income families such as my own, to have a space to have fun without having to pay anything. We need to invest in these parks because they benefit all communities and people from our community. Speaking from experience, I believe that no matter your financial status, you should be given opportunities that can bring you joy. Everyone deserves to have a great time with their family, and I know that parks will provide that space for us to do so. I support this measure because although sales taxes will increase, it is a small material price that will lead to a more valuable income. It will bring, it will bring joy and happiness to all families and our community. Thank you for your time."
So I have one card. I'm not sure if this person is going to be commenting on this item. Linda Sanchez, are you commenting on this item? Are you here? Okay. So I don't have any cards, and I think I do have a few. I'll give just, you know, last opportunity for anyone. You can come and share. If you haven't already spoken but are dying to speak, please come and share your thoughts, and we want to get this vote going. Thank you.
Hi, Andy Hansen-Smith, 3335 East Kirkoff Avenue. Just on behalf of the Board of Curators of Fresno, we are very much in support of this Parks Initiative. Thank you.
So if I didn't call your name and you turned in a card, you can just come up quickly?
Hello, everybody. Well, my name is Lucio. I live in District 4. I'm a youth organizer with Boys and Men of Color, which is part of Building Healthy Communities. I just want to let you guys know I love parks. When I was younger, I would go to parks almost every day. I would ride my BMX park to, BMX bike to different parks. And now that I have my son, I go to Villan Park at least four times out of the week. And so when I heard about this Fresno for Parks Initiative, I volunteered my time and started talking to registered voters and gathering signatures and support. I really think this is a great opportunity to completely transform Fresno's park system. And because of my job, I do a lot of canvassing, so I get the opportunity to talk to folks you guys represent, and this is amongst, one of the top issues for them. Parks is definitely among the top five. I hear more and more people mentioning the importance of having a good, clean, safe parks nearby, and it's up there with public safety, roads, jobs, and air quality. Parks are a benefit, but only when they are properly maintained. The Parks Master Plan update says that 80% of our parks are in fair or in poor quality, and it's due to the lack of funding. Folks have been kicking down this, kicking down the can, or kicking the can down the road, and it's been happening way before you guys got elected. And so you guys have a great opportunity to make a real impact and transform our park systems here in Fresno. I hope you make the right choice and help us place a measure on November's ballot to give your residents the opportunity to decide what they want. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have Ricardo Cisneros, Steve Gutierrez, and Alejandro Mendoza.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ricardo Cisneros. I'm 16, and I'm from District 1. I support this matter because parks are essentially a good place where people can go and experience new things. Inspiration Park is my home park, and I go there almost every day. But even though I go there every day, it's becoming one of my least favorite parks very quickly. Escape Park is in terrible condition, and it hardly has any shade, and it's hard to have fun at a place where the floor is extremely slippery and filled with huge cracks in the floor that continue to grow. Some days, we aren't even able to use the park due to it being filled with water from sprinklers and the woodchips surrounding it, and that's not all. The injuries I've seen here are very brutal and some of the worst I've ever seen. Not to mention, they were due to the poor material that was used to build the park. I see a lot of this in the parks throughout Fresno. With this ballot, we can help build way better and safer parks for the community. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Mendoza. I'm 17-years-old, from District 2. My local park is Lions. My concerns about it is that there is not enough water fountains, and the restrooms there make me feel really uncomfortable. And the park, in my opinion, it leaves a lot more shade. A lot of people go to parks to get away from home, and you want everyone to feel safe that any park they're at. All I'm asking for is more and better parks. Thank you.
My name is Steve Gutierrez. I'm 19-years-old, and I reside in Council District 1 in my hometown of Fresno, California. The reason I have came to consume a few moments of your time is for the simple fact of parks. My entire life, I have utilized the local parks. As me, myself, being a local skater, my home park is Inspiration Park. In these past years that I have stayed around there, I have seen the peak of it, and sadly now, I am watching waste being laid to it. The skating ground is messed up and has caused myself and many other skaters injuries. That is one of many reasons why I support the Fresno for Parks measure, because I would love to see the measure on the November ballot. It would be great for the funds being able to be used to help me and others like me. I just want to thank you for your time and ask that you take this into consideration. Have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council President Soria and Councilmembers. My name is Sherma. I reside at 2219 South Wainry Avenue, Fresno, California, 93725, in District 5. I'm an ally with Fresno Boys and Men of Color. I grew up in Fresno. I spent my childhood here. I grew up near Yosemite Middle School. The closest park to where I lived was Remain Park, but I barely went to Remain. It was too far. Street gangs were rampant at the time. There were a lot of Asian street gangs when I was growing up. Out of concern for my safety, my parents just wouldn't let me go to Remain. So instead, I went to Yosemite. It had everything that a neighborhood park should have. It was within walking distance. It was literally one block from my house. It had basketball courts, and during the summer nights, and the summers, there would be lights at night so we could avoid the day heat, the day temperatures, and play at night. There was a gym that was converted to a rec center with games and indoor courts, and there were adults there who made me feel safe. It had playing fields that were green and open. All that was really missing was a swimming pool, but we did without it. This was my neighborhood park, and I was happy to have it. And now I understand, as a youth organizer, that investments in spaces, in spaces like these were also investments in young people like me. It's not far-fetched to believe that then, and perhaps now, these community centers were competing with street gangs to recruit young people like me. And now, as a father, I'm taking my daughters, a three-year-old and a one-year-old, to parks like Muscueta. They laugh and play on the play structures, and they seem to enjoy parks as much as I do. Parks are as much an investment in our community as there are investment in our families and our young people. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are you coming up to make a comment? Perfect. If you can state your name and address, for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam President Soria and every council member here tonight, or today. I wanted to start off by saying that I'm not here with any specific organization, but I heard parks, and that's why I wore my green shirt today. Now, parks are really important to all our communities. The people my age that we see here today, if God permits, we are all going to be fathers. We're going to have children, and we're going to want to take them to parks. Now, I wanted to recognize our City Councilmember here today, Luis Chavez. August 4th, last Saturday, he actually went with over 50 community members, volunteers, to Feinture Creek Parkway. We cleaned it up, and that's going to be a future Parkway. So I wanted to thank you very much, Councilmember Luis Chavez, for doing that, being involved. And just in general, I want to thank everyone that's here today for being here, because you guys are the reason that this is going to be on the ballot November 5th. And we're going to pass this, and Fresno is going to have more parks, it's going to have beautiful parks. Still got a minute. And, and we're going to do a great job, all right? So you guys, make noise and clap if we're going to have this on November 5th.
I gave a little card, but it's for a different subject. I live at 316 East Shields. I lived at 611 East Kearney Boulevard. I had no idea there was a park, a little playground, across until I started taking the bus for a week. I saw prostitutes getting dressed for work. I saw drug deals going on. I saw boosters selling their stolen goods. I had no idea, and they blamed the city for taking away the garbage cans. And I told them, I says, "You're not supposed to be living in here." I says, "I'm waiting for a Walmart. I'm waiting for a Target on our side. My son's the manager of a Starbucks. We have to go all the way to PG&E to get that expensive coffee." I says, "What is wrong with the West Side that nobody wants to invest in us? We're the poorest of the poor. We need the Walmarts. We need the Dollar Trees. The closest McDonald's is on Olive." And I says, "What is it about us on the West Side?" I grew up going to Santa Francis Catholic School. I says, "And we had community. We had, you know, our neighbors that watched us, because my mom and dad worked." I says, "And as soon as the lights came down, we were inside." But I don't know what happened to the West Side when I left and came back to Fresno, but I wanted to come back. I want to buy a house there, and I want to reinvest in the West Side. But when I have to go to Blackstone and Ashland to get my medication, there's something wrong with this whole picture. And I support the parks. My son's first birthday party was at Radio Park. He wouldn't hear of having my grandson's birthday party there, nothing. I said that park across from Kearney, Quigley Park, where I play softball at, they steal the sprinkler heads, they steal our aluminum seating. Every Monday, we come back, and there's a theft of some kind, the snack bar, our blowers, our machines that we use to keep the field, you know, up to par and ready for us to play softball. So I'm hoping this passes. I signed it in front of Walmart, and hopefully you guys vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Baines.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. And I'll make my remarks brief. I think the council's probably eager to, eager to vote on this. So today is, you guys did, made our job up here really easy, and I want to thank you all for that. We're not here, as a, as a council at least, to have a philosophical debate about taxes. We're here to put it on the ballot for you all, because you all, as citizens and residents of our community, did an incredible job in galvanizing tens of thousands of people around a single issue, a single important issue. And so I am happy to do my part and honor the work that you all have done. So that's what I'm going to say, because that's what I'm here to, that's what we're here to do today. And when we, and I have a very sneaky suspicion, we will do that. But I do want to offer some, some comments about what, what I realized in this process and what, what I took away from the incredible amount of investment, time, and energy, and dialogue that this effort generated. And so there's a, there's a worthy discussion about whether or not we should, we should tax ourselves. That's a, that's a great discussion. Not for today, in my opinion, but that is a great discussion. What I walked away from was the understanding of the passion that Fresnoans have for our community. And you all touched and inspired me as a, as a fellow resident about the far-reaching passion and goals that you have for this place that we live and call home. And so whether or not people agree with taxes or not, the vision that you all have of wanting to have a beautiful Fresno, a Fresno to be proud of, and you all are not asking to have a beautiful Fresno, a Fresno to be proud of, and you all are not asking us for the minimum or the basics, your vision is grand. It's big. It's bold. And it moved me. So while I may have had a different idea about what a tax measure should have been, you all's vision is wonderful and beautiful and needs to be acknowledged by this council. Me, as a council member, am proud to have you all, as residents, pushing us for something more. So many times, since I've been on this diocese before I got here, Fresno's been the butt of many jokes. Many of our own residents don't have the pride that we need to have in our community. We, as a council, on many occasions, just do just the minimum, just enough. And here you all are asking us to do so much more. So it will be a great campaign season. I'm sure that you guys will mount an extremely diligent campaign. I wish you the very best. I really do. And I am happy, Madam President, to make a motion to put Option B resolution on the ballot.
I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second. Council Member Brenda.
All right. Councilman Baines, you kind of jumped the gun. Some of us want to talk about taxes, right? Okay. Anyway.
No, you absolutely, I said for me.
I'm just kidding him, actually. I just want to make a few comments, too. For starters, I do want to say congratulations. Very well done. A lot of hard work paid off, and that's the reason you're here today. When you're a tax fighter, I mean, I came from an organization, Oliver knows that the motto is "taxed enough already," and I'll let everybody figure out what that is. So I really have a very high threshold for support of taxes. And as a matter of fact, there was a dueling tax to what you guys were, have been contemplating that came before us just a couple of weeks ago from the mayor and others, and I had to say no to that as well. So I want you to know that I think that the amount of money, and so when you're a tax fighter, you kind of get left out of the conversation when everybody's talking about taxes. But I had my good friend Paul Gibson call me last night, and we had a good conversation, and we agreed to talk about it a little bit more. And he brought up some things, and he said, "Steve, I want to give me a shot to convince you that this is good for our city." And he led off with a few things in our phone call that I would like to acknowledge. And so what's really weird, you're in this weird position, Oliver. Although you oppose taxes, there are some good things that come about, okay? And a lot of Larry, you mentioned cleaning up 41 and 99 and along some of our highways. Tom, you mentioned the River West Project that I, with Paul, serve on the Conservancy. Some of the great things that would happen as a result of your work. I told Paul, don't anybody throw tomatoes at me yet, but I told Paul, "I think it's too much money," okay? And he said, "Steve, it's not enough money." So, Oliver, they are very bold. Right. But I think it's a lot of money. I think it's a lot of money on one issue. And so it gives me a heartburn. And, you know, I remember, by the way, let me say for the hyper-pro-parks people in the room today, which I assume is everybody, we've had three votes for new parks since I've, in the five-and-a-half years that I've been a council member, and I voted yes for all of them. Voted yes to support brand-new parks. Martin Ray Riley Park was the first one in District Seven, Inspiration Park in District One, and the Cultural Arts District Park in District Three. All of them, south of Shaw Avenue. So I've been very happy to support parks. Now, it doesn't rise to the level of what you guys are asking today. I understand that. But I think, I think for me, this is a lot of money for just one issue in our city, and it is a priority. And I want you to know that I'm not blind to the needs that we have. We did the Parks Master Plan, and it showed that we were about $112 million in deferred maintenance. I see that when I go out to play frisbee golf at Woodward Park. I see it with my own eyes, the deferred maintenance. So I think you guys are on to something. I applaud your hard work. When I found out that you guys got your signatures passed over at the county clerk's office, at no time did I ever think that I would fight all the good work that you've done. So today, you know, I would like to say that, because there's a lot of debate on taxes in our society, you guys did it the right way. When a legislative body doesn't want to do something and you want to take it into your own hands, our system allows for that, and you guys accomplished that. So I give you props for that, and because of that, I wouldn't stand in your way if my life depended on it, and I'm going to support it going on to the ballot in November.
Council Member Olivier.
Thank you very much, Council President. I wanted to thank everybody for coming and congratulate all of you for the good work that you have done. I mean, obviously, I've been in the political sphere in this city for eight years or more, and I know that it's not an easy feat. You have moved a mountain by obtaining these signatures, and I also will vote to place this item on the November ballot for everyone. And I thank you, and I thank you for acknowledging me. I've acknowledged you, but perhaps some of the folks who applauded what I just had to say might believe after what I finished talking was a bit premature. I'll be voting to place the tax on the ballot, but I'm leaving office soon, and I feel like I want to express my opposition to the tax, and of course, here's why. First of all, I don't disagree with the aims of your item, not one bit. My time on the council, I've been very vocal about the condition of the parks in my district. I've shared the misery with some of the folks in this room. I see Lee sitting over here. I have picked up syringes at Radio Park. I have picked up shell casings at Granny's Park. I have chased off homeless from a playground. I've really been in the thick of it. I think one time I had a T-shirt made to attack Mayor Swearengen for the condition of one of the parks in my district, just to draw attention to the problems of the park. So I don't disagree with any of the folks in this room that there is a set of problems that requires a lot of energy to fix and also requires more money to fix. So I don't disagree with that. I disagree on how we get there, to a place where parks can be a source of pride for our community. I think it's important to understand where I'm coming from, and maybe it's a little bit different than where some of my colleagues are coming from. Member Baines and I are going to be leaving office in January, and we're the last two remnants, really, of the depths of the Great Recession. One of those council members that helps deal with that situation has gone on to be mayor. But after having gone through that experience where we couldn't get a loan because our borrowing ability was junk bond status, we couldn't rehire people. We didn't rehire police for a very long time, or firefighters. We were running this city government on a shoestring, and regrettably, the city government, as I'm sure you all know, became, for the most part, service insolvent. We moved the tree trimming to a thirty-year schedule, and we really struggled to provide the kinds of services that folks in our city really have come to depend on. But what we didn't do was go out to the people for a sales tax increase. The people who were here worked in a bipartisan fashion, and we expressed our regrets and our concern with the people that we represent, why we couldn't provide those services. And it was very regrettable, but it was a very difficult time to go through, and I wanted to especially thank Mayor Ashley Swearengen for guiding this city. And I know she's done an awful, awful lot in the city in terms of land use, in terms of Fulton Mall, in terms of everything. I'll always remember Mayor Swearengen for getting this organization through when cities like Stockton and San Bernardino went bankrupt. It was her leadership that helped us get through without going bankrupt. So part of my mindset is because I'm from that place where I think that by reprioritizing, we can get to where we need to be, but unfortunately, I don't believe that going out to tax is the prudent thing to do. It's also important to know a little bit about the district I represent. I know some of you have said that you live in District Seven, and I appreciate you very much for coming here today. But we have some problems in District Seven, and I've worked really hard to move the needle on some of these problems like high-concentrated poverty and crime in the eight years that I've been here, and I'm very excited that my successor will continue to move this little part of the city in the right direction. But just three zip codes: 93701, 93702, and 93703, where I live. The average household income is $25,000, $34,000, and $39,000. The median household income in these three zip codes that I represent is $19,000, $25,000, and $26,000 a year. Now, it's regrettable, but too many of the neighbors I have the great honor of representing are struggling with poverty. Now, when you're poor, food is expensive, housing is expensive, back-to-school clothes are sometimes an out-of-reach item. A tire blowout can be a catastrophe that could result in late or even missed rent. And this is my district. Sometimes my neighbors ask me for financial help. Most recently, a young woman sent her little boy to my door to knock on my door. Everyone knows where I live, and they all have my cellphone number. They sent a little boy to my door to ask for $40 to get to payday, and I gave it to him. Now, the time before that, I had a constituent come to my door. Her car was impounded for parking tickets or expired tags or something, and she needed money to help get her car out of impound. So I've seen this go on, right in the neighborhood, in the street I live on. So I've heard it said that thirty, forty, or fifty bucks a year, whatever it turns out to be, is not a lot of money. But I've illustrated that thirty or forty dollars in District Seven for folks is a lot, and I'm quite convinced that it's too much for my neighbors to bear. Because a sales tax, this tax, is a regressive tax. And a regressive tax, of course, imposes a greater burden on the poor. The taxes tend to reduce the tax burden of the people with a higher ability to pay as they shift the relative burden increasingly to those with a lower ability to pay. Most of the people in this room will never feel the pain of paying for this tax. We're blessed. Most of us in this room are so affluent that being taxed three times, property tax, whether you own or you rent, you're paying property tax, the current sales tax, and now this tax. So most of us are so affluent that we'll never feel being taxed three times to build and maintain parks. And to us, to some of us, it makes a lot of sense to pass this tax. Unfortunately, the myriad problems this will inflict on my struggling neighbors does not make sense. So I will vote to place it on the ballot, but I will be unable to vote for it come November.
Council Member Brettafield.
Yes, I too want to congratulate all of you. Getting $35,000 signatures to bring this before the council is quite an accomplishment. I heard through the last several months it wasn't going to happen. The signatures weren't there, and in fact, the signatures are there. And so I want to congratulate you. It's a remarkable achievement, and you deserve a lot of credit for it. I know how much hard work went into it. I too, because of that accomplishment, will support this going on the ballot. It's the right thing to do. But I too have problems with the measure and with the tax. I think we all love parks. We all love green space. Do we need more parks? Do we need better maintenance, more upgrades? No question, of course we do. But we have other priorities that we need, too. I mean, we need parks, but we need hundreds of more officers, 911 dispatchers who answer calls, people in emergency. Right now, that's not happening quick enough. We need fire personnel, upgrading of police equipment, fire equipment. How do we meet these needs? Well, it comes down for us to prioritize the money that the citizens give us. But I don't think raising taxes is the right answer. You talk about rankings. We are low on the rankings for parks. There's no question about that. But we're also ranked very high in terms of being one of the most over-tax states in the country. In comparing the percentage of income that people pay for state and local taxes, California is ranked fourth highest. And if this is passed, we will go from just under eight percent local tax, sales tax, to almost eight and a quarter percent. In most other comparative studies, since we're comparing rankings, California is in the top ten for highest taxes and burdens to its citizens. Just consider some of the taxes we pay. We pay federal taxes, state income taxes, local sales tax, gas tax. The Senate just passed Senate Bill One, which raised the gas taxes 12 cents on the November ballot. I hope that gets repealed. So we pay 77 cents for every gallon of gas in taxes. We pay Social Security, Medicare, unemployment, county excise tax. It's no wonder we're working till May just to pay the taxes. Now, in addition, on the June 5th ballot that we just had, Californians voted on Prop 68, which was a $4 billion bond measure for state and local parks, and it passed. Now, in this proposition, $1.3 billion will be dedicated toward parks with the largest amount, $725 million going towards, quote, "neighborhood parks in park poor neighborhoods," end quote. Now Fresno's going to seek money. It's going to seek millions of dollars for these parks. I don't know whether we'll get them, but we're going to be pursuing it, and it just passed. For this reason, I don't think we should be burdening our citizens with more sales tax increases for parks. Now, as my colleague, Councilman Olivier, said, "This is a regressive tax. It hurts the people who can least afford it." Now, for most of us, that's not going to be a problem. And for many of the people who spoke, it's not a problem. But there are people, it does impact. It really does impact. And for the three main forms of state taxes, sales, property, income, the sales tax hurts the poor the most. Now, the other problem with this measure is this initiative would create a new bureaucracy consisting of nine unelected people, supported by taxpayer-funded city staff, and they would have the power to, quote, "conduct hearings and review and make recommendations to the mayor and council on everything from how money is spent, the Parks Department budget, capital improvement plans, and even raising fees for parks." Now, that's what this measure calls for, nine unelected people to make those decisions, to hold public hearings and make those decisions. It's a flawed measure for that alone. Now, this tax measure also is for thirty years. Measure C was twenty years. This tax measure would result in $37.5 million being added to the parks budget that already exists. The total budget's at $27 million. So that would bring it to $64 million. The fire department budget is $69 million. Over the thirty years, it would be $1.1 billion of taxes that our citizens would have paid, that would have come out of their pocket. I think that's what people are talking about. It's too expensive. It's too much money. $1.1 billion over thirty years. It should always be up to the elected people to hold, be held accountable for any money that's spent here, not nine unelected people. And additionally, 20% of the funds from this measure, nearly eight million, would be directed to job training programs, after-school programs, arts programs, not parks, but this is called a Parks Measure. Now, parks and green space, clearly, they're essential to our community. There's no question about it, and they're essential to our quality of life. We need to continue to maintain our parks, and existing parks. But we have to always prioritize the fact of public safety, and we have a problem with public safety. And when we talk about recruiting people here, yes, they want to know about parks. They want to know about amenities, but they want to know if we have a safe community. And you have to ask yourself, "Do you feel safe?" as we hear about people with break-ins and robberies and drive-by shootings. I mean, clearly, we have a problem. So I think raising people's taxes, taking more of their hard-earned money, creating more government bureaucracy is not the answer. And so that's why I'm not going to support this in November, and I think it's a problem for a lot of reasons. And as they say, the devil's in the details in terms of looking at this measure. Sure, everybody wants parks, but there's problems with the measure, and that's why I'm going to oppose it. Now, again, having said that, I do want to congratulate you, and I'm going to support this putting it on the ballot.
Council Member Chavez.
Thank you, President Soria. I want to congratulate the group. I think, you know, as my colleagues mentioned, it's no easy task to gather 35,000 signatures to put something on the ballot. And, you know, it's definitely a lot of hard work. I'm going to be supportive, putting this on the ballot in November, but I want to flag a couple of things as we... flag a couple of things as we have the conversation in our city. And I want to flag something called equity for what this looks like for our city. And the reason I'm bringing that up is, in my previous life, I was a school board member for Fresno Unified, did four years there. I talk about it like it was a prison term, but it was actually pretty enjoyable. But I did have some experience in how bond funds are distributed. And I can tell you that when I got on that board, there was a discrepancy, disproportionate discrepancy between how bond dollars were dispersed throughout the city of Fresno. And I remember thinking about the conversation of the Tale of Two Cities. And the reason I flagged that for you now is, we just had a couple of projects that were mentioned earlier with some speakers. We had 49 Acres, we had the Fancher Creek project. And so I want to thank, I want to thank Tom Bohigian, I want to thank Juan for meeting with me and talking about, you know, the process and what that will look like. I do want to sit down with you and talk a little bit about more about what this looks like for my district specifically, specifically southeast Fresno. But again, congratulations. That was a lot of hard work that you did. 35,000 signatures is not an easy task, and I will be supportive today of the motion.
Councilmember Capriolio, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Did you want to say something?
Absolutely, and thank you. It's been fascinating listening to all the people with their conversations and points made. And I want to thank all of you for participating in today at your video. We all agree on our community regarding parks. I would add, Mike, what a meeting requires is to place this item above the ballot. The people have spoken. I support the people to vote on this issue. My vote is yes. Place this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolio. I will keep my remarks short. I think everything that has, that needed to be said was said. I will say that I'm very proud of all of you, of the residents that stepped up, because as mentioned, it's no easy feat to collect as many signatures as you all did. And that is what democracy is all about. It's about the people. It's not about us being up here, but it's about all of you. And so I want to thank you guys for the hard work that you guys did up to get you to where we're at today, but also understanding that there is a lot of work ahead in November. But I'm too going to be supportive of this measure. Many of you guys know, in my time here on the council, I've been a big champion of parks in ensuring that even our existing parks get the necessary funding, but we don't have enough. If we look at our budget today, our general fund investment to parks is about 4%. It's unacceptable. And I know that that's why you guys made it a priority, to see additional investments go into park. I know my colleague mentioned that the state of California voters voted for a Parks Bond. Well, guess what? In order for us to get those dollars allocated to Fresno, we have to have some skin in the game. And we don't have any money right now in our general fund to put that skin in the game. If this is successful, that's what will help us leverage those additional dollars that the city of Fresno too deserves to get. And those are facts. We need money to leverage money. And so I will say, I know that folks say that, you know, it's going to hike up our sales tax. I get it. I'm sympathetic to the comments that were made by my council colleague, colleagues to my left over here. But there are cities that are around us that have been willing to pay a little bit more to see the amenities that they need. Madera up the street, they're paying 8.25%. Selma down the way, they're at 8.25%. Huron, you know, west Fresno County, they're paying 8.25%. So communities around us are doing it because they recognize that they too want to be part of the solution and not just come and tell us how we deal with the dollars that we have, but that they're willing to invest a little bit more just to see transformational change in their community. So again, congratulations to all of you. Look forward to seeing you out, because this is where the hard work begins. And I hope to see you guys get out the positive message that this could bring to the city of Fresno. Thank you. And we will have to do a roll call, though. I know many of you guys probably want to see on the screen, but we cannot do that because we do have Councilmember Capriolio on a call, so we'll have to take a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Yes, and to clarify, council, you're voting to approve Item 1 and Item 2B.
Perfect.
Okay, there's a first, a motion and a second. Councilmember Baines, your vote?
Yes.
Brettafeld?
Yes.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Olivier?
Brandow?
Yes.
And Soria?
Yes. So the motion carries 7-0 unanimously. So we're going to go ahead and continue with the rest of our agenda. We have, I believe, about five items left, six items. We'll go on to general administration as soon as folks. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute recess till the room clears up. With general administration. Is Councilmember Capriolio still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, perfect. We're on to Item 4A. This is item to award a requirements contract for the custodial services at various city facilities in the amount of $491,286 per year for three years with an option for two one-year extensions to Scrub Can Inc., Public Works.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmember, City Manager, Robert Anderson from the Public Works Department. Today, I'm bringing before you requirements contract for custodial services at various city facilities. This contract is for cleaning of 28 buildings and associated exterior areas. Per the city procurement process, staff sent out a request for proposals on April 13, 2018, posted to the Business Journal and the city website. The RFP was distributed 24 prospective proposers. We received three sealed bids on May 8. On May 31, the evaluation committee interviewed all three proposers. The evaluation committee consisted of purchasing public utilities and Public Works personnel. The evaluation committee was unanimous in their decision to recommend Scrub Can Inc. as the company best suited for this contract. As was stated, if approved by this council, the contract with Scrub Can will be at a cost of $491,286 per year for a three-year period with the possible two one-year extensions. This ends the staff's presentation, and we will be available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. No one is punched up. There is a motion, and I'll second. I just want a clarification from staff. On the bid evaluation, I saw that there was one bid that was very low. Can you maybe explain what happened there?
Well, I can't really explain exactly why they bid that way. I can only surmise, in my opinion, when you put out a contract for construction or for custodial services, the best bid and the true bid is the one that's kind of in the middle, at the top of the bell curve, if you will. So I believe they must have either misbid it or left a lot on the table. That'd be my guess.
Did you guys at all contact them? I was just curious because the discrepancy was like $200,000. And so I know that the amount of work seems like, I don't know if it could be done with that amount.
Well, as you can see by the other two bids, they were kind of close. So I would say that that's probably the true bid. The company that left, or that gave us the low bid, was the current company that we have. And the last time they bid, they left approximately $70,000 to $100,000, in my opinion, off of their bid. And we have had a lot of complaints about the service. And so, in my opinion, if we don't go with the Scrub Cam, or we went with the lowest, lowest bid, we'd probably continue on that same problem that we've had for the last three years.
Okay. And that's about the amount that we had been paying for the last few years, or?
No. The last few years, we, let's see, I have that other bid. Was this one? The last bid was, the low bid, or the one that was chosen anyway, was $531,000.
So it's around the amount that we've been paying?
I think that the last time, they left some money on the table as well. We've had too many complaints for them to, my opinion is, they've been cutting the service to try to make up the deficit in their bid.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, those are all my questions. So there is a motion. I made the second. Any opposition? Seeing, oh, well, we have to do a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Baines?
Yes.
Councilmember Brettafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Capriolio?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier?
Yes.
Councilmember Brandow?
Yes.
Council President Soria?
Yes.
7-0.
So the motion carries unanimously with a 7-0 vote. Next, we'll go to Item 4B, resolution authorizing the submission of grant applications for the California Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program, Cycle 9, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Shelby McNabb. I'm the grants administrator with the Department of Public Works. The item before you today is a resolution authorizing the submission of grant applications to Cycle 9 of the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Projects were selected based on collision patterns. Staff recommends that council adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of the grant applications. One addition that I would like to make, we did, Council President Soria, look into a project that your office had requested at Shields and Hughes to add left turn phase. So if that project, if you'd like us to submit it, we would need a motion to add that to our list.
Perfect. I would make a motion to add the Shields and Hughes, along with approving the authorization of the submission of grant applications. We'll go out to the public. Is that all your presentation? I'm so sorry.
Yes, that concludes my presentation. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. The screen is clear, so we do have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Oh, we'll have to do a roll call vote, sorry.
Councilmember Baines?
Yes.
Councilmember Brettafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Capriolio?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier?
Yes.
Councilmember Brandow?
Yes.
Council President Soria?
Yes.
7-0.
Perfect. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 4C, this is an action related to introducing and adopting an emergency ordinance for public health, for public health, amending the Fresno Municipal Code to allow watering public median islands serving a community purpose.
Good afternoon. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. And as you stated, we are here with an ordinance that would allow us to irrigate our median islands that have turf on them. A little history, the state during the drought did pass a emergency drought regulations that prohibited watering on turf islands. In 2017, the governor lifted the drought emergency statewide, although Fresno County was still considered to be in a drought at that time. The city did copy the, or mirrored what the state had done, and prohibited watering of turf islands. We have several. There is a map here, and I can explain to you where they're located. Some of them have trees. The ones that have trees, like Van Ness and Weldon, have been watered with drip irrigation, but not with spray heads. So this would allow us to turn the spray heads back on and to start to irrigate the turf islands. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Is there anyone from the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio, and I'll second that. We'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Baines is away from the dais. Councilmember Brettafeld?
He said yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Capriolio?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier?
Yes.
Councilmember Brandow?
Yes.
And Council President Soria?
Yes. So motion passes 6-0 with Councilmember Baines absent. Item 4D, resolution submitting to city electors, a proposal to amend the charter to modify or eliminate provisions that are contrary to and preempted by state or federal law, and providing for the placement of the measure on the November 6, 2018, general election ballot. This is a proposal that I'm bringing forward, really working with the city attorney and doing some of the cleanup language, and he can further explain.
Yes, council. Of course, the charter has been around for a long time. And over time, it's become, we've become aware that there are a few provisions in the charter that are no longer enforceable. Either they have been preempted by state or federal law or court decisions. The provisions that we're talking about include Section 309 that limits when candidates for city office can raise money. A U.S. Circuit Court of Appeal decision has said that time restrictions on raising money to run for office are not legal. Because there's no, you would have, there's a high showing to show that they're legal under the First Amendment, and the provision we have then would not hold up in court. So we are recommending that that provision be stricken. In fact, the council's already changed that pursuant to an ordinance, but it also needs to be changed in the charter also to be consistent. Second, Section 701 requires the city manager to be a resident of the city within six months of taking office. The state constitution does not allow residency requirements for other than elected officials. So that is preempted by the state constitution. Section 1225 prohibits residential water meters. That provision has been preempted by state and federal law also. And in fact, we already have water meters. And then also then...
Hey, excuse me. Doug, can you go on that water meter one a little bit? Tell me a little bit more about that issue.
Yes. Well, the charter section has been around for a long time. And since it was written, state and federal law has said that if you want allocations of certain water from the state and the federal, which we are contractually obligated to get to have sufficient water, then you must have water meters.
Got it.
I think it's to promote conservation.
Yeah, and then, is that required of all cities in the state of California municipalities?
Yes. That would be allocated this water, yes.
Okay.
And then Section 1207, under the charter, the charter does not require a balanced budget. But what the charter says is that the council must adopt a budget by the end of June, and then it contemplates that the council would return in August to raise taxes if necessary to balance the budget.
Is that a separate item?
Yes. Well, that's part of the cleanup, and then there's a separate item that you're proposing that would just say you have to adopt a balanced budget. But this item then contemplates that the council could just raise taxes in August. Well, Prop 218 does not allow the council to simply raise taxes. So what this is saying is that you would, the procedure remains, but with voter approval. In other words, the council could implement this section of the charter if the voters also agree to raising the taxes. So that's really all it's about. All of these things are, they don't really change policy. They're currently not enforceable the way they are. They're currently not enforceable the way they are, but in our opinion, we're better off having a charter that reflects current law.
And they can be all voted on, you know, they can be put on the ballot in one, in one ballot
Yes.
Motion.
There, there are court decisions on this issue. When we have several charter amendments, the charter amendments are considered one item, a single subject. And in fact, if you were to think about changing the charter like when we went to Strong Mayor, uh, if you were required to have a separate vote on every paragraph in the charter that was being changed, the, the ballot would be really long. So all of these things are considered a single issue.
Great, thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on this item? If you can state your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, Doug Bagum, Fresno. Uh, just want to pause for a moment. I noticed this, uh, August ninth, and, um, talking about beautiful parks here today, but, uh, 73 years ago, the good folks in Nagasaki were having a bad day. So I just want everybody to remember a monumental event that should never be forgotten by this nation and the people who serve our nation to take those awful wars on. I'm here today, members of the council, on this measure because, and I hope, a lot of thanks to, uh, Yvonne Spence for distributing this memo that I put out. And it deals with the issue of bundling these, uh, charter amendments and under one question, because this does violate the single subject. Superfluous measures like you have in the past, I can understand, but this are valid standing, uh, charter sections that are still valid. Counsel is using, your, your, your legal counsel is using the premise that a court in Texas, Fifth District Court of Appeal Federal, has upheld some measure there, but tossed it out, and it has an effect on us. It does not have an effect on us. A federal appellate court has no jurisdiction standing in our area. So to say that does is, is, is felonious. We already have cities in this state that are still having this time limit. San Diego, Long Beach. We've had an appellate court in California uphold it. So how can you say a court in Texas could override it? I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense. Now, you can put this measure out by yourself. Put it up. Alls I'm asking is have, be brave enough and put it out all on its own. That's what to do. The Water Initiative, that was initiative by the people who went and got petitions just like these folks did. That measure deserves to be put out there by itself, because when you have an initiative garnered by the, by the vote and, and the impetus by the people, it deserves to be treated differently than a measure put on by a council. Okay? And then the other measure, which was the 701, is the management, I mean, the residency requirement for a city manager. Yeah. The language of your rank and file in the California Constitution cannot require someone to live in the city that they work in. But you use management employee contracts, and under that agreement, two willing parties can agree that that person who is the manager can, must live in the city of Fresno. That violates no constitution. And if that person is-
Thank you. Can you wrap up, wrap up your comments?
Okay. Pummeling items for you to pass that affect the citizens of this community, I would hope that that person, that city manager, would live within the same area that they're making rules for. Pretty simple. But nonetheless, whether you support or non-support these, I think they ought to go on by themselves, particularly the 309, because it's not illegal. It's still standing law in California. The Water Initiative was put on by the people, whether it's moot or not, I think you ought to leave it on there, because it gives you the power to, if the state gets goofy to say, "We have home rule because our people said one thing." And it's, it means nothing, it stays there. So thank you. But the single issue going on the ballot is wrong, and it can be challenged. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. The screen is clear?
Yeah, well, I just punched in.
Councilmember Brandau?
So, I just asked the city attorney, so what would it be like to put these on individually? Is there some major cost incurred, or?
Well, uh, what the city is essentially paying for by putting things on the ballot is printing space. And so if they were separate on the ballot, there was, it'd probably take up more space on the ballot than the sample ballot and that sort of thing. There would be some additional cost. My guess, based upon the history, maybe $10,000 more to separate them out. But that's educated guess.
I, I, I would not have a problem putting these things on separately myself. Now, I haven't, I'd also like to listen to my colleagues, but some of these things, uh, so some of them, I don't have any problem with, and then some of them I have some concerns about, so I'd be almost interested in voting on them here individually, but I'll, I'd like to defer and listen to what my colleagues have to say about this as well.
Councilmember Baines?
Thanks, Council President. And, and I, and I think I was out of the room, Councilmember Brandau, when you may have asked the city attorney about the communication we received today. What was the response? If you don't mind repeating the response, Doug?
Yes. Uh, there was a suggestion of the council that, uh, placing all four of these items on the ballot together as one question would violate the single subject rule. That is not the case. They're all considered single subject under the charter, and there's court case law that supports that. So the council could either put them all together or separate one or more of them out.
So what is the single subject? What is that law?
Well, gen- like, it would, it would not be correct to put a charter amendment along with a tax increase together on the ballot.
I got it.
Those things are-
So because they're all charter amendment issues?
Right.
Okay, so, okay, I see what you mean. Now, I, I will say that from a, a legal standpoint, I do understand the distinction. From a practical standpoint, I actually think that there's some merit in the discussion. Um, and these are actually different questions that we're, that we're asking people. And so we would be asking people to, to do one vote and make all these changes under a single sweeping vote, right?
That is what's proposed, yes.
Yes, I, I would, I would be open to putting them on separately too, and deciding here which ones we wanted to have on, and, and allow people to take each issue separately. I, I, I don't think that's unreasonable.
Councilmember Olivier?
Okay, what happens when the good people of the city of Fresno decide that, um, city manager Schechter needs to reside in the city? Like, what happens when, like, we're, the, so the fix is going on there? So that, I mean, because we constitutionally can't make her live here, right? So that's what this cleanup is, this, that particular item. What happens when everybody says, "No, she should live here"? Then what?
The state constitution would prohibit that.
So we can't-
Like we said, these are-
So all this stuff is just unenforceable anyway?
It's cleanup to make the charter consistent with state law.
It's just cleanup, it's, it's, I mean, whatever. It, I, I'll do whatever you guys want on this, but it just, I mean, I realize we have to go out and do it, but it's, if, even if they, even if the, even if the, the voting public, the voting public has the opportunity here to actually vote for unconstitutional thing, and, and we still wouldn't, I mean, it's still unenforceable. So even if these things remained on the charter, they're unenforceable, right? So it's just extra words?
That's correct.
It's just extra anachronistic words. I, I mean, we don't even, it just seems silly.
Councilmember Baines?
Well, when you put it that way, so, so let me ask you, let me ask you something. If, all of these, this cleanup language, and I guess it's a couple of different discussions we have to have here, could we actually even enforce any of these things that are, I mean?
These provisions of the charter, we've already done legal opinions that they are not enforceable. But so we have provisions in our charter that are illegal.
So we're gonna put something out to vote for the public to potentially say no to that they can't say no to?
If they say no to, we're right back where we are now.
Well, it begs the question why we're even doing it in the first place, then?
Just put it on there as one thing, and if it, if it goes- It's gonna go. If it doesn't go, well then, there's nothing we can do about it.
I'll make a motion, would, okay, motion, we have a second. Could we, Madam Clerk, call the roll?
Wait, could we, could we specify the, this neighborhood and street where we want Wilma to live?
I want her in District Six.
Can we, I would, I would like-
Fresno High Area.
I would like Wilma to live in District Seven, please. We have a, we have very low housing costs in our district, which we're proud of. First-time homebuyers take heat.
Madam Clerk? Yes, okay, Councilmember Baines? Bretafeld?
Yes.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez? Olivier? Brandau?
No.
And President Soria?
Yes.
Actually, counsel, before we finalize, for both this and the next item, there's some technical language that we need to read in the record to, to be included in the reso. It won't change anything, but I need to read this into the record. Uh, to add the paragraphs, uh, the full text of the ordinance submitted to the voters is attached to Exhibit A. The full text of the measure is not required to be printed on the sample ballot and voter's pamphlet. However, the full text of the measure shall be made available at the Office of the Fresno County Clerk, Registrar of Voters, and the Office of the Fresno City Clerk. And also, the city clerk and city attorney are authorized to make any typographical, clerical, non-substantive corrections to this resolution as may be deemed necessary by the Fresno County Clerk, Registrar of Voters. So that, that would be for both this and, uh, Councilmember Brandau's item.
Perfect, thank you. So where was the vote, Madam Clerk?
The vote is six to one, with Brandau voting no.
Great, so motion passes. Next is item four E, it's a resolution submitting to the city electors a balanced-budget charter amendment.
All right, and I would just like to introduce that real quick and turn it over to Doug as well. So just in our, um, conversations with this year's, after five and, five and a half years hearing five budgets, this year's budget was the first time that I heard with my own ears that we didn't have to have a balanced budget. And so when that happened, it struck me, and I remember saying something, and Council President, we talked about it right after that meeting, and I thought that I would like to come back after the budget was discussed and talk about cleaning that up as well. So I think that legislative bodies all across our nation, from city councils to, um, the federal legislative bodies, should strive to produce a balanced budget. They should, quote, "live within their means", and so this is not some bizarre thing, this is just very simply that, in my opinion, so. So anyway, that is my motion to adopt this resolution and put it on the charter for people to vote on a balanced budget.
Councilmember Olivier?
Is it state law that municipalities have to have balanced budget?
No. This question arose this budget season, and we did a lot of research. We also checked on what other cities have. Some charter cities actually have provisions in their charter requiring balanced budget, but otherwise it is not required.
So where, are there, are there recent, I mean, Steve, I'm gonna vote for this, but are there recent examples of cities that pass unbalanced budgets?
It's quite-
I think, I think everybody has to. I mean, no, I'm happy to support, I was just curious, thank you.
Councilmember Baines?
Of course, my little button doesn't work, so thank you, Council President. So, so let me just ask a couple, couple of questions for clarity, and I'm probably gonna ask Jane, oh, oh, there she is. Oh, you're way down there. Oh. Mayor, you, you, really? Okay. Now Jane has to walk way over here, okay. I know. So Jane, thanks for, thanks for, um, chatting with me a little bit, a little, a little bit ago about this, and I'm gonna, I wanna go through some of the questions that we talked about out here for the public, and for my colleagues as well. So my question was kind of what the, what the need was to do this, and do we actually adopt, or have we ever in recent memory, you know, that you remember, Jane, actually adopted a budget that was unbalanced?
We have not, in, in my experience, uh, in, in the city has adopted a budget where the expenditures have exceeded the revenues. No, we have not.
And, and is there a scenario that, well, I know you, well, I know you well enough to know, you've been here, I've been here, you've been here since I've been here, and you've never, ever, even when you were the budget director, finance director, submitted a budget that was unbalanced?
No, we have not. That, but that, the charter does not forbid it.
Right.
It's just that we have never done it.
Is there a scenario, and balanced means, because we actually talked about what balanced means? Can you explain to the council what, what balanced actually means?
A balanced budget ideally means one in which the revenues and the expenditures match. That is, that is a balanced budget. However, a, a budget can also be balanced as long as the revenues exceed the expenditures, meaning that there are enough revenues to cover any expenditures that are made. An unbalanced budget is one in which the expenditure or the appropriations, um, are greater than the revenues, which means you have an inherently unbalanced budget, which means you cannot cover your appropriations. That would be an unbalanced budget.
And that's what's never happened, is that we've never, we've never adopted a budget where the appropriations were greater than the revenues?
Not in my memory.
Not in your time, right? I mean, unfortunately, you can only speak to, to your time.
I have a lot of memory, but no.
Okay. And so this, adopting this would not, it doesn't force the council to adopt a budget where it's equal, just that the revenues have to be able to cover the appropriations.
That is correct.
This past budget season, would, would there have been anything different that we would have done or adopted with, if this charter amendment were in place? For instance, would the council have been able to, you know, say, "Well, we, we wanna add money to this and take money away from that", or whatever the little, we do the little song and dance every year where we move, you know, the little two or three million dollars around that we can play with? Um, would, would that, would that have, would that have changed at all this, this year for us?
If, if this, if what happened during the budget this year happened under this provision, nothing would have changed. However, if you had caused the budget to be unbalanced, if you had appropriated more than we had revenues to cover, this would have forbidden that from happening. This, this change would have forbidden it from happening.
Can I just chime in? Sure. I think that, um, and that was one of, that's one of the concerns, so I'm glad that you, you brought that up, because the process that we have here during deliberations of budget, we generally have had the, pretty much the power to say, "Hey, we wanna see these things, we vote on them, so they're additional, they may exceed the revenues", but, um, majority of the time, the administration goes back to see where they could fit to balance out the budget. What I get from what you guys are proposing is that we will no longer have that power. We, we're not, from the, from how you are portraying the situation. The situation is now the burden is on the council to figure out, um, what other appropriations we're gonna have to reduce in order to present a balanced budget back, because that's generally how, at least in my four years, that's how it's gone back and forth. In this, in, this last instance, in this last budget, we didn't have that problem because there was these additional dollars that we were able to redistribute for, or appropriate in, in the fashion that we voted on. But say in the future, we have a priority that may not match what the mayor have, we are gonna have to figure out if we're gonna cut something that they proposed rather than, um, them going back to see what, I, I just think it shifts the burden of who has to do, um, in terms of the, the cuts or the identifying the funds before finalizing the budget. At, at least that's, that's, if you wanna clarify that so that I'm not concerned, because-
No, I'm, I'm, I'm simply trying to envision, uh, what, what would happen in, in that instance, because traditionally, and because it has happened before, I mean, this is, obviously there's give and take during, during the budget deliberations between the administration and, and the council, and normally what happens is, is you're absolutely correct. There, there is a, there is a, a common ground that is found, uh, that enables the budget to be passed in, in a positive posture, or at least one that is balanced. And I, I don't see where this particular amendment would change that dynamic to the extent that, that we would not still collaborate and still try to come to an accommodation and, and pass a, a budget that is either, that either has revenues in excess of the appropriations, or that is completely balanced, which we've, and we've done both in, in, in my experience. I don't, I don't foresee, uh, an instance, and, and perhaps I'm not the one that needs to address that, but I don't foresee an instance where, where that would change.
And, and that may be in this case with this administration because of the collaborate, collabor- collaborative efforts, but we can't predict future administration.
Councilmember Soria, I, 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 no, I, I, no, and, and listen, you're the Council President, but I, I wanted to make sure that those are the questions I had of, of Jane, and, and I'll just, Steve leaned over to me and, and brought out a good point, and I'm gonna ask Doug now, thank you, Jane, I appreciate it. So, here's the question, the, the question to the attorney. Steve, can you, can you ask, yeah, yeah, 'cause I, I, I'm not performing it the right way, but you mentioned it.
So, I really believe that, so if you really think of what we do, the mayor proposes a budget, the council adopts a budget, it's really the false counsel to do what we did this year, or to do what we did in the past years. So, Doug, I see what my colleagues are talking about, some crisis that could arise whether council wants something that is in conflict with the administration on the expenditure of dollars, but council, quite honestly, has the power to say, this is what we want, and now, to the administration, we, would you go out and make this happen? In other words, give direction to staff. So, say there's a conflict of five hundred thousand dollars, or a million dollars, and we could say, this is what we're voting on, we give you, give direction to staff to make that happen. Is that correct? So, council has this, council has the power to adopt that final.
Does this changes any of the council's authority in that? I think that's essentially...
Under certain circumstances, it could change the dynamic. The mayor presents a balanced budget for the council to approve. Let's say the council says, we wanna add a million dollars for Item A. Normally, then, the administration would work to cut something else, one or more things to make it balanced, but if you had an administration that says, we're not going to help, council, you have to figure out where to cut a million dollars, then this would make a difference. The council would have to figure out what to cut to make it balanced. So, it adds strength to council.
Council President, whenever, at the end of the line.
Okay. Are we done, Councilmember Baines and Councilmember Brandau?
Yeah, I'm, I'm done for now, I just wanted to say that, that's the material change, actually, and I gotta think of, I gotta think about that, in some cases I hear, the thought is that it could give strength to the council, but in other cases, it, it may not, so, let me think about that, thanks Doug for clarification.
Councilmember Capriolio?
Thank you. I'm not sure there was clarification there, because it, the analysis articulated by Council President, seems more...
You're kinda muffled, Councilmember Capriolio.
Uh, let me, hey, what's my name? Is that better? I'm taking it off speakers, so I can... Is that better?
Yes, I think that's better.
To be off?
Yes.
I'll just go forward. So, again, I appreciate this and conversations on the dial, toward Council President's analysis of this, I'm really unclear on the reason for the proposed charter amendment. We've all been through many budget sessions, we approve a budget, presumably, with a balanced budget here, because we're not testing, which I'm really interested, why we need to include this, a word, quote, and would add or change our current practice of approving a balanced budget, so I'm really glad we got this, I guess. I mean, with the, a lot of, it seems like it's kind of a given that this is how, you don't need to change it. I think I'm cutting it out or not? Yeah? You all here?
So, what we're getting is that you have some concerns?
Absolutely. It, it's clear to me, why would we, this, to be changed, this, the risk to reward, so I'm not gonna...
Okay, so you're not gonna support it, that's kinda what I can make out of your comments.
I'm sorry, but, uh, again, it's clear to me, what, something that's not broken, it's not broken. Can, can you hear?
We heard a couple words.
Well, I, I don't know how to articulate any further with the, with the next one, right for our meeting.
All right.
Thank you, so what we get is that you are not supportive, we've been balancing our budget, I think that's what I heard, we've, we've done it, so, I'm not sure what else you said, but you're not supportive, okay, thank you.
Lord, yes, that's...
Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. In my opinion, it just won't change, because, yet I've been here through, through ten, ten budgets now, that caps, is he near the bar there in, in Montana? And, what it can do, it sends a message to our credit agencies, and really, anybody here who ever runs for office, is to, to fundamentally say, I support a balanced budget, it's just the basics, and I would say, to vote against that, to me, would not be something I would want on my record, but I'll leave it to you, but, anything we do, it's a, it's a given and take, we go, that we go back and forth.
Oh my God, I'm about to walk out of here, are you crazy?
What's causing that?
He has a what?
Can you mute your phone, Councilmember Capriolio? Thank you.
Okay, let me continue, so as we go through, there's always two possibilities, they mentioned, what, what if the administration doesn't wanna do, the administration could do that anyway, in the current situation, let's say you wanted to move three million dollars around, I said, no, I absolutely refuse, then it's gonna come down to a vote and a veto, so, the council can essentially, if they've got five votes, can back down the administration and make it balanced in their way, you always have that capability, that doesn't change at all. What this does, make sure, and maybe, I, I've never seen a council here that went out of balance, it doesn't mean a future council can't do that, they could come out and say, there's an extra twenty million we need, we'll figure, we'll pick it up sometime later this year. That would be financially irresponsible, speculative, and again, I've never seen that done, what this does, it closes the loophole, but remember, you always have, if you've got five votes, you've got the power, you wanna move ten million, twenty, it's up to you guys, so it's always a balance of power on the deal, so I think, this doesn't hurt, it just adds a added layer of, of, of stability, it prevents a future council from maybe going crazy, and I think it represents a, a strong message to the taxpayers, this council values their tax dollars. Thank you.
Councilmember Olivier?
I think it's good, and thank you, Council President, I think we've, we've heard a lot about, I think we've heard a lot about, whatever, I'm just gonna ignore it, a lot about direct democracy, a lot about democracy and people participating in their local government, I mean, this is really the, the biggest complaint from people of all political stripes, Democrats and Republicans are very suspicious of elected officials because they believe that they, they waste money. Look, I'm really proud of what we've been able to accomplish here at the city of Fresno in the, in the eight, well, nearly eight years I've been here, look at what the federal government has done, they're twenty trillion dollars in debt, and the, the American people are up to their eyeballs in it, the, those elected officials have mortgaged this entire country, twenty trillion dollars in debt. So, I think this is, goes a long way to involving people in the budgeting process here at the city level, to let them vote, to, to require that their city have a balanced budget, I think it's a fantastic addition to the charter, and so, I'm more than happy to vote for it right now, and I thank Councilmember Brandau for bringing it forward, but folks, I, I urge a yes vote on this, I think it goes a long way to allow people to participate in, in the process, and, and, and bind this organization down to, to having a balanced budget and doing what's right, so, happy to support and urge a yes vote, thank you, council.
Councilmember Chavez?
It's not a difficult situation for me, I had the same concerns that my colleagues had spoke about, but, that, that is correct, I mean, the dynamic here is four councilmembers agree, that's what happens, five, if we, the mayor decides to veto it, but, I think, I wanna remind too, remind my colleagues that, even when we have situations where we disagree, the mayor only recommends a budget, the, the sole authority lies with this body, that's always been the case, and I don't see anything in here that, that dilutes that or compromises, I hope that we're not ever in a situation, or, or any future bodies, where we're actually spending more money that's coming in, I don't think we want that for any of those, and, and then, just as a extra comfort level, so to speak, we still have a reserve, a reserve if there was ever a, an emergency or anything that we can dip into, and the council controls that, four, five, to veto-proof it, you know, we haven't had that yet, Mayor, but if we have to, I mean, I think that's, that's available, so, I'm, I'm gonna support this today.
Great, so, the, the screen is clear, Councilmember Capriolio, you back on? No? Okay. So, we'll go have, we'll have the roll call vote still?
You, you're only required to do the roll call vote if he's participating by telephone, if he's off.
Well, he, he was, but we don't really know where he's...
It wouldn't hurt to do it.
Oh, he is, see, he's alive.
I was trying to text you guys, but, anyway.
Oh, we can hear you better, did you wanna add anything else, 'cause you were mumbling?
No, no, no.
Hey, listen, I'm the quietest...
Councilmember Capriolio, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, I'm the quietest councilmember ever, you guys, you take a lesson from revenue. With that in mind, again, I'm unclear on the reason for this proposed charter, we've balanced budgets, continue to balance budgets, and the word balanced, it's what we've been doing for a, a pretty many terms, many, many councilmembers, so, I, I don't know why it's not broke, so, it's uncertain why we're trying to change the status quo, so that's why it's... So, we can balance budgets every, every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolio. So, there was a motion by Councilmember Brandau and a second by Councilmember Chavez. Madam, can, no, madam, can, we went, we went to the public, I thought so, did we? No? Okay. We'll go out to the public, is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back, so there is a motion and a second, madam, if, Madam Clerk, if you could, call the vote.
Councilmember Baines? I'm sorry, no? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brettafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Capriolio?
No.
Councilmember Chavez? Councilmember Olivier? Councilmember Brandau? And Council President Soria?
No.
So, the vote is four to three, in favor.
So, the motion carries four to three, thank you. City Council, Item 5A, these are the council boards and commissions, are there any reports by my council colleagues? Okay, so seeing none, we'll move on to Item 5B.
Council President, I would just add, the petition was raised in Montana, that's the time to put that up.
You're gonna hang up?
No, I'm, I'm still standing, this is, uh, my desire, I'll hear you guys.
We'll move on to Item 5B. This is a bill for introduction, amending sections 1, 302, and 1, 308 of the Fresno Municipal Code relating to general enforcement authority. Councilmember Chavez and Vice President Brandau.
I wanna have Doug kinda go over just briefly what this, what this entails.
Yes. This is a municipal code change that would simply add the city attorney's office to the list of those that are designated to be able to inspect and write administrative citations and so forth to enforce the municipal code. The charter currently says the city attorney is responsible to prosecute violations of the code, this would fully implement that, it, this is intended purely to supplement and not supplant anything that code enforcement is doing, if this is implemented, we, we of course would then continue to work closely with the city manager's office and code staff in what we do.
Oh, with that, do you wanna make the motion?
Yeah, I would just like to add, as far as, I really feel that it helps asset, we get a quarterly report on asset, which is always very positive, but, here's one little thing that could even improve it a little bit more, and so, give some of Doug's personnel the opportunity to cite things that they see when they're out in the field, so, I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
Third?
There's a motion and a second, we'll go out to the public, is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back, Madam Clerk, the screen is clear, so if you could call the vote.
Councilmember Baines? Councilmember Brettafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Capriolio?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier? Councilmember Brandau?
Yes.
And Council President Soria?
Yes.
Seven zero.
So, the item carries unanimously, seven zero. Now, I think that wraps up all the items, I will go out to unscheduled communication, there was Ms. Linda Sanchez, is she still in the room? Seems like she has left. Anyone else that wants to make a comment right now during unscheduled communication? You can step right up, and you will have two minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Hey, hang on a second, there's, did you folks get, that just walked in, did you wanna speak, did you see them? Did you already, did you wanna speak to an item? I mean, if, it's okay.
Yeah, you can speak right now, sorry, during unscheduled communication, if you wanna come up, you can speak on anything.
And also, council, before we go, and this morning, we were on other items in ceremonial, but I'd like to adjourn this memory, or this meeting in the memory of Millard Valines, he's the father of our former Assembly Member Mike Valines, who just passed away a couple of weeks ago after a very short bout with cancer, but, Millard Valines has passed away, would like to adjourn in, in his memory as well, thank you.
Come on forward, if you can state your name, address for the record, you will have two minutes.
My name, Barbara Powery, and what else?
Your address?
My address, and that would be 2335 East Normal Avenue, Fresno, California.
Okay, you'll have two minutes.
Okay, and, I just wanted to say hello to all the council members, this is my first time actually coming to a meeting more recently, I've been a citizen here of this city for twenty years, and I've seen some of you at different events, actually, a follow-up to your comment about cancer, I work with an organization called CINO, which is Cancer Excludes No One, and it's under the auspices of AS1 Services, and I wanted to address the, all of you here, just to mention to you, that I know that there's a lot of efforts being made regarding cancer, as far as the effects that it has on individuals, the name of our nonprofit is called Cancer Excludes No One, and I add it to that from care, the C is for care, the E is for exercise, the N is for nutrition, and the O is for optimism, so we do have different events that we carry forth within the city for those efforts, but what I wanted to say as it related to the politics of it, is that I think it's really important to acknowledge the effects of a disease like that on individuals and within the city, and that if there could be an effort made to help those when they're going through that, as far as family members that are supporting it, funds that can be directed so that housing can be provided for them on a temporary basis, so that individuals can have some type of support while they're going through the cancer treatments, we do raise money for the Fresno... We do raise money for the Fresno State Research Center with Dr. Bush, Jason Bush. And we've done that for a number of years through an event during the Christmas time, pretty much that's called Celebration of Life and Music of Soul. So, this past year, last year, we had the event at the Hotel Fresno, and we're planning to do it again this year as a benefit to raise money. So, I wanted to just say hello, thank you for your support, and just mention that as a need that we need to address on a citywide basis. And then also, I would like to have information on how to become a city, what's the word? Um, sister state or sister city to my hometown, which is Rivera Beach, Florida, in West Palm Beach, Palm Beach County. Um, I'm a graduate of Georgetown University, and I went to school, graduated from Palm Beach County from North Shore High School. And our city went through a development stage where, while I was here in California, they developed the downtown area. So, basically, I see years later what's happening in Fresno and would like to pair it to business and to politics that's taking place in West Palm Beach because I think that we could learn a lot from the model of City Place and the Downtown Development Authority there. So, I do have contacts to do that. I do have my own business, and so I, I would like to...
If you could wrap your comments up, cause you're two minutes.
Yes, and so that's it. So, I wanted to get information as a citizen, just to have more information. My business is Awaken Image Productions, Publications, and Public Relations. And I would like to know what is the process to be able to do that, to propose it officially?
Okay, in terms of be involved with the community?
To actually propose that the city consider a sister relationship with another state and city.
Okay, perfect.
Is there any information on that that you could provide for me?
I would be glad to have my staff give you some information on our Sister City program.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
So, we'll go ahead and adjourn in the memory of Mr. Valines. And we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you so much.